We're going to call this meeting in order and start with our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's start with the roll call.
Councilmember Atkin.
Here.
Councilmember Asher.
Here.
Councilmember Brinkman.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember West.
Here.
School Board Member Affelt.
Here.
School Board Member Simon, he's going to be late. School Board Member Kent has been excused. School Board Member Dice, she's excused. And School Board Member Dwin.
Here.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda tonight? No, seeing none.
Can I just make a comment about the agenda, which is that I think I need to leave again at 7:30 tonight, and I just want to be sure that we get through all of the important and action items, although they're not action, I guess, but important items that we hope to get through or decide to attend the meeting.
Yes, well, we have a two-hour meeting according to our minutes, and Member Atkin and I are going to stick to it, right?
Excellent, thank you.
Yes.
I've been reminded.
Oh, it's good to be reminded that you have a public comment, please.
Actually, what I was going to say is one of the things we're doing up here is we're saying-
Maybe you can introduce yourself.
Sorry.
Yeah, and the mic isn't picking you up either, Juliette.
Anyway, my name is Juliette Dunn. I'm the Wellness Director for Emory Unified School District, and one of the things I wanted everyone to know, in light of all that's going on in Washington, DC, is that we are going to be signing people up for Obamacare, and it's called Covered California in California at the Family Resource Center. We've been applied, we've applied to become a center to do that, and even if we aren't, we do have social services there on the first Tuesday of every month to talk about Medi-Cal and Medicaid, and we will be working on Obamacare also. So we're reaching out to the communities, we're reaching out to the school, as well as the community communities in Emeryville through the Rec Department to be a center for that kind of information, so I just wanted to let everyone know that we will be there. Ms. Hundley is there from 11 o'clock until 6:00, Monday through Thursday, and when we can, we will extend those hours if necessary, and we're going forward even though Washington isn't.
Have a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
There were, in the first day Covered California was in business, it got 5 million hits on its website.
Wow.
Excellent. Well, we're open for business in California.
How's Head Start doing? Are they there? There, I talked with them today, and-
Okay, I'm on, so I talked with the director today, and they're good, they're covered, so we, there's no interruption in service for our Head Start program.
Let's move on to the approval of our 9:15, 9:513 minutes.
I have two corrections. One of them is that on item number four, Staff Committee Member Comments, I asked for a report from the Full Service Task Force, not the City School Meeting, to be on the agenda, which it is, but that should be reflected in the minutes. And the other one is under the same Staff Committee Member, no, it's under five information items. We have a notification note that Donahue requested a brief report on the financial history. That is, is that reflected as a public comment? That's a question. Who would know?
It was a public comment, as I recollect. It's not, doesn't appear to be separately noted as a public comment. I suppose that could be amended. Is that your motion?
In terms, I'd like to have a public comment.
Okay, all right.
Would that move approval with a correction?
With those amendments, do you have a second?
I have one question also, farther down on 5C4, where it says, "Davis and West requested lifelong medical update to be included as a standing agenda item for future City School Committee meetings." I wasn't, I just wasn't recalling the lifelong medical update and what exactly that was. I thought maybe it had to do with the Obamacare. Is that from lifelong? Is that who presented?
No.
So I wasn't quite clear on, that's correct.
If my memory serves me correct, I remember West, it was Member Davis who-
You ought to talk louder.
It was my, from my understanding, that Member Davis had made the request to have the Obamacare come back on a, on the agenda as a regular standing item. It wasn't lifelong.
Okay.
It was more about the collaboration with the county regarding the Affordable Health Care Act.
And maybe that might be through lifelong, or there's some other component, some partner that we're working with perhaps, and that's why?
I don't know how lifelong came in.
Okay.
On the minutes.
So I guess just to make sure that that's corrected, and then also to ask, my only question is then, is a standing agenda item, I'm concerned that every month we're going to be having people who are required to come and present for three to five minutes, and I, I'm just concerned about our timing in terms of that. I think as a report, it would be wonderful, but I'm not sure if there's a person that needs to attend each meeting as a result, or if that was your intention. I think we just want an update.
Please.
Actually, what I'm thinking of here is just a brief, brief report, and that can certainly be handled by the superintendent. It doesn't mean a staff person has to come to every meeting.
Great. I would then approve the minutes with those distinctions or clarifications.
My question on that was that, was that a standing item or a periodic item?
I'll tell you, I think it's just so integral to what we're trying to do with ECCL, this whole, the whole issues around the health arena, both for the students and for the parents and the members of the community, that we would do well to keep it as a standing item. Again, as I say, very brief, you know, where are we, is something happening, nothing happening? Just let's keep our eye on it. That's the intent.
Okay, just clarifying the-
And I would think, you know, something as Ms. Dunn just done today, which, which advised.
Right. So is that doable from staff's perspective?
Oh, yeah.
Great.
We can give, we can give monthly updates.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, so the, do we have a second?
I'll second the minutes.
Okay, and the three items amended are 4B to say Full Service Community Task Force instead of October City School Meeting, 5A2 to note that Mr. Donahue's remarks were a public comment, and then 5C4, not lifelong medical update, but Affordable Health Care Act implementation update as a standing item. Anyone object to the approval of the minutes as amended? Seems that we're all in favor, so adopted. Staff Committee Member Comments. Any staff comments for starters?
Everybody come to the art show tomorrow, 6:00 to 9:00.
And don't forget, we have the Alameda County Mayor's Conference here next once tonight that you're all invited to, starting at 6 o'clock at Expressions College.
The invitation's not to the public, but to the committee members?
The public can come for $50 a person.
Is that right?
Yeah. So I mean, it's open to anybody, it's just that the fee is $50.
And do they have to respond by a certain time then?
I don't know if there's any, I've never seen any specific time that people have to respond, but we have members from PG&E there, we have other outside agencies, for-profit agencies there, so I would assume if they're there, anybody else can come and pay at the door. Well, we can't pay at the door, but you have to let the city know, because we're only paying about 50, 55 people, so RSVP as soon as you possibly can.
Any other comments? Superintendent Lindo?
Yes, so, got that right here. Just want to, just want to let everyone know that milestone was reached Wednesday night when the board approved the Turner abatement and demolition contract for the, began the process of abatement and demolition for the ESS facility. Congratulations, I think, are in order for the board and the City Council for paving the way for this demolition to begin in mid-November. So I just want to thank everybody for that work, I mean, for everything that's happened in that regard, and we're looking forward to that internal work beginning first, and then moving on to the remaining pieces, which Roy Miller will talk about later on in his presentation. Also, Oakland Unified School District delivered and installed a kiln in the Sarah Stillman's art class, and we're really appreciative to them, to our Oakland Unified School District partners. This was a request that was made last spring so that they could expand their participation with Kala Art Institute, and we're really excited about Kala's support of our students, but also the, just the support that Oakland gave us in getting that installed very quickly. Just a reminder to all the City Council members, remember October 9th, we're having Dave Martinez come to be recognized by the board to show our appreciation for his contributions to our, our school community, and that will be at the beginning of the board meeting on October 9th. Another reminder to the community, October 17th, we will be participating in the Great California Shakeout, and there'll be some, some other cities that will be participating as well, so, but most schools, both in the Oakland, Berkeley, and actually all over California, will be participating, and you will, you may hear, and community members may hear simulation sounds coming from the schools on loudspeakers and different things like that. You know, last year when we did the Great American Shakeout, we actually had an earthquake on that day. It was really kind of funny, it was, it came right after the drill. But students are going to be practicing drop, duck, and cover, and then they'll be evacuating the building, so if you see, and that evacuation looks similar to fire drills, so if you see students out and about, and if you see more students out and about in the community, you'll sort of know what that's all about. It's all over California. If you have any questions about it, or if any parents out in the audience have any questions about it, please feel free to contact your principal at the Emory Secondary School or at Annie Yates. And then yesterday, October 2nd, Governor Brown signed Assembly Bill 484. This is the legislation implementing the new assessment system in the state of California. It establishes the measure of academic performance and progress. It will be known as MAP, so you've heard STAR in the past, and the CST exam that accompanied the STAR test, this is called the MAP, and this will begin, they'll begin some statewide assessments, doing some pilots, English Language Arts and Mathematics in 1314, and then it will roll out completely in 1415. But this AB484 actually establishes all the parameters that the State Board of Ed, State Superintendent Tom Torleksen, and, and the Department of Education will take in transitioning to this new assessment system. And that's all.
All right. Any other comments? We are- Yes.
If there's no more staff comments. I just want to let the school community know that on Tuesday, the City Council appointed its second poet laureate for the city, and she comes full of ideas for youth programs in terms of spoken word. So stay tuned.
Your name?
Your name?
Sarah Kabrinsky.
I have one other announcement, I guess.
Oh, okay.
On Wednesday, October 16th, there is a meeting at City Hall about the Sherwin-Williams development potential, and there's, it's followed up by, there's another meeting, I think it's the B-PAC, maybe on Monday evening, at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, about that same development project, plus a study session perhaps at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so those are all opportunities for the public to weigh in if you're interested or want to hear more about the Sherwin-Williams Development Project.
Do we have a public comment on that comment, Mr. Wong?
It's just a-
You have to go to the mic if you-
Throw it over there.
Power, ma'am.
I had a senior moment and forgot to say to the public comment that there is a, a meeting of the Bay Bridge Park Progress Status tomorrow in San Francisco, and I will send the details to Cindy regarding time and place. Very important park and project for all interested parties. That's all.
All right, thank you for that reminder. I'm going to move us on to information item one. We're already a few minutes behind our schedule, but Mr. Powell, you're up first with Emory Ed Fund. If you can keep your remarks brief, we appreciate it.
Okay. I'll keep it brief. I'd like to thank our partners at AAA who hosted us recently, the Board of Directors for our Board Retreat two weeks ago, and we were able to discuss our goals for next year and continue a strategic discussion around fundraising for the Ed Fund and the school district. Recently, appeal letters were sent out to the majority of our volunteers within the Ed Fund and the school district, and we want to first thank our volunteers for their continued service and help and time, but we also want to let them know that we need funding also for the several programs, which include our scholarship program for nearly 20 students in college, our volunteer program, and many grants program amongst other. Every dollar counts, and if you have $10 through $100 a month, and it can't be spared, we do have the availability on our website at emoryed.org, and you can click on the Campaign tab to make your donation, and I want to thank Ruth Akin for her recent donation through that appeal. Thanks to our partners at Pixar Animation Studios, who recently submitted their volunteer hours for a match with their foundation, and the Ed Fund received a check for $6,200 thanks to our Pixar reading buddies. We're still recruiting for the Senior Coach Program, which was formerly the Senior Advisor Program. We need about 35 more coaches. I want to thank our partners at Wells Fargo, who allowed me to make a presentation at their Emeryville Marketing Office Division, and Heather Streets, who invited me. I'm pleased to report that close to 10 employees are interested in signing up for the program. If you'd like more information, visit www emoryed.org and click on our Programs tab, or you can call 510-601-4997 for more information. Dr. Lindo and I have been cultivating a relationship with AT&amp;T for over a year, and we have met several times with the Vice President of External Affairs for the Bay Area, and I'm happy to report today that Ms. Clooney, who is the Director of External Affairs of AT&amp;T, will be joining the Emory Ed Fund's Board of Directors next month, and thanks to our new partners at AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T has also notified me of a program called AT&amp;T Chair Simulator Tour. It is, it was requested if they could host this simulator at our high school, and the chair is made up of a chair, steering wheel, pedals, and a monitor for the driver. Drivers experience a 3D driving simulation involving a city of eight blocks and realistic texts that appear on a smartphone accompanying the cheer. This recreates the eyes off the road and hands off the wheel experience of texting while driving, and a single experience can range from one to three minutes depending on how well the driver is able to maneuver. And AT&amp;T would like to promote awareness and responsibility around teenagers not texting and driving, and the simulator will show students just how dangerous it can be. The date of the simulation is to be determined, but we are expecting it to be onsite next week, and I want to thank again our partners at AT&amp;T. I also want to thank Dave Martinez for $2,900 that has been designated for the Annie Yates Garden and Gardener to support their work there. Lastly, the Superintendent has successfully secured a meeting with the Gates Foundation, and they will be flying down to meet with her regarding a college readiness initiative for a possible grant proposal. That's all.
Wow.
Any questions?
Nice acti, comment, nice activity.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice work on the AT&amp;T and the Gates Foundation, nice.
Took a year.
Yeah, well, and still more work to be done there.
For sure.
Yep. Any public comment on that item? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the COC report. Mr. Roush, please introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. I'm Tom Roush, I'm the Chair of the Citizens Oversight Committee for Bond Measure J, and I thought what I'd do today in my time is give you a refill review of the annual report that we completed back in June and have presented to the school board. I will say that we continue to be a strong and dedicated and core group of very dedicated people on the COC. We do meet regularly, and we have very good meetings with lots of good questions and issues raised, and we feel that we're getting, building a great relationship with staff along the way, so the COC is strong, vibrant, and healthy. The annual report follows the format that we used last year that we thought worked really well. Again, I'll publicly comment on Lisa Carlisle's hard work in pulling this together. We continue to use that template, and I think it's a testament to Lisa's great sense of service to the project, that we continue to use it and find it very helpful. Couple of the highlights in the report, on page two, you'll note the COC voted in March 2013 to reduce the number of scheduled meetings to six per year. We had been meeting once a month. The thought was that we do have enough time, six times a year, to get through our business, and just because of the schedules that we all have and the vacations and the business commitments and so on, we stand at a better chance, we stood a better chance of having the, a full quorum if we were only meeting six times a year, so it's basically every other month, September, November, January, March, May, and June. So we started that first schedule this September, our next meeting will be in November. The Chair of the COC does reserve the right to call special meetings during the year with public notifications consistent with the Brown Act. I think another item worth highlighting is on page nine, based on the reports we reviewed and the information provided to us, the COC is of the opinion that funds were spent in accordance with Measure J requirements. So that's probably the one sentence that makes the most sense to include in the report. We then supply some analysis of those bond measures, the graphic on page 10, we think goes a long way in explaining some somewhat complicated information in an easy-to-digest and comprehend format. It also stretched my Excel capabilities to the limit, so I'm particularly proud of that, and I thought I should share that with you. Also, another innovation in the report is some of the screen captures that we have from the flyover prepared by the architects, which we think did a terrific job of helping people understand where the money was being spent, how it was being spent, and sort of being able to visualize the project. We put a link to the animation in its entirety on page 14, so hopefully people will have a chance to take a look at that. Then, the other item I wanted to point out is the recommendations. If you look on page, beginning on page 18, we looked back at a finding and the recommendation that we had made in the previous year's report and the action taken, and are satisfied that actions were taken in line with our recommendations. We have since also, on page 21 through 22, come up with further recommendations based on the prior year, and are excited about seeing those followed through. We already have had Roy give us a tremendous overview of the approval process used by USD. This is the finding on page 22 with the recommendation that that be delivered in our September 2013 meeting, which he did do. So I will conclude my comments by wanting to publicly thank Dave Martinez for his service. Dave has resigned from the COC. He's moved out of the area. Dave was absolutely instrumental in helping get the COC off the ground and form it into the body that it is today. Always great insights, good comments, terrific participation in all of our meetings, and he will be missed, for sure, but we know that Dave's going to go on and do wonderful things, and his memory with, with us will, will continue, so. Any questions?
No, Krista, I just want to acknowledge the tremendous work. This is a volunteer committee. You guys spend a lot of time and effort and thought on this, and I've been to a number of meetings, and I hear rigorous debate and spirited discussion to really try and figure out what's best, ultimately what's best for communities, and making sure that the needs of the kids and teachers and families are being served, so I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for your tremendous work.
Thank you, and I'll pass that along to the committee. Josh, thanks.
Yeah, I would second that. You answered my one question, which was whether you got your briefing at your September meeting on construction expenditure process.
We did, it was very thorough.
So that's already been carried out.
Yeah.
Any other member comments or questions?
I have a question. For your Excel chart on page 10.
Yeah.
Could you explain the B row a little more thoroughly, in terms of what those activities were? It's replace, demolish, or renovate district properties.
So, yeah, that's, well, that's the work associated with replacing or demolishing district properties. I don't have the financials in front of me to go through line by line.
You don't have the breakdown of activities that fall under that category?
I don't have those with me, no. Not in this report. We have those, we do see those reports, but I don't have that report with me this evening.
Could someone speak to those activities?
Do you have, do you have the report? I don't, I don't have a copy.
Oh, yeah.
Can I see yours?
So honestly, I would have to go back and actually look at what's been logged to 801 versus 802. I can't, I can't at the moment just pull it out of the air either, but I know each time an expenditure is made, it's coded to either this, you can see those numbers in brackets ahead, so it's coded to either this 801 or 802 category.
Would you be willing to, after the meeting, just to send us an email that-
Sure, or I can, I can bring a better report back at the next meeting, whatever you, whatever your pleasure. I just don't, I can't pull it out of my memory at the moment.
I believe the committee was presented with a much more detailed report.
Oh, month by month, absolutely.
Based on, so maybe we could just send out the more detailed breakdown.
Easily, I mean, so that what the COC every month sees a complete breakdown of all of these expenses, and they're categorized based on these resource numbers, so I can do that. I mean, we have the full year's worth of COC reports, I can bring it back, I can email it, whatever, whatever your-
Would our CBO know what those expenditures are?
I think it's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is a full year's worth of detail, and we can provide it for you. you.
An emailed file would suffice for me.
All right. Yeah, that works great. That's easy.
Yeah.
But combined, it's about $6 million, so it's good to understand what that is.
Sure, and they see those reports and review those and approve them everywhere.
I will, I'll send out to the full City Schools Committee. I'll send the, there's, I have in a single PDF all 12 months' worth of all of the expenditures, and you're welcome to those.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wes.
Yeah, I just have one further question. You, you highlighted the kind of crux of all of your work, which is that, I'm trying to remember, that you, the money was spent in accordance with Measure J, and I'm just trying to find that. I know you said it was on page nine, but I just don't see it on page nine.
Oh, there's been an update, which may have not gotten into your packet.
Oh, I see. Maybe that's in our new packet then.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I was going blind.
Okay.
Other questions? Any public comment on this item? Okay, seen none. Thank you, Mr. Roush, for your work and your report. The next item up is from Mr. Bonet, our EUSD financial report. And if I could ask you to try to, can you do your presentation in about 20 minutes?
Five.
Five, all right, even better.
They could ask you to say, "Any questions?"
Yeah.
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 So if you don't mind, I'll stand right here so I can push the buttons. This is based on our unaudited actuals that we recently presented at a previous school board meeting in September. And the first slide is just a graphical showing of our revenues. The big blue section is from revenue limit, and just to tell you, in fiscal year 1314, the whole financing for schools has changed, so the revenue limit does not exist for schools anymore. We've gone to what is called the local control funding formula imposed by the state. So, but for last year, this reflects the revenue limit, which is our general purpose unrestricted funds that we use for most all operations of the school district. Then we have a small slice of federal revenues, other state revenues, and our other local revenues of about $3.7 million, which most of that comes from the local community via the parcel tax. And then a small sliver of transfers in. This is a graphical depiction of our expenditures. So the big blue section again is certificated salaries, and those are basically our teachers and our administrators. So that's all the employees that have to have a certificate to do the jobs that they're doing for the district. And then we have classified salaries, and then employee benefits that service both the certificated and the classified salaries. That includes CalSTRS for teacher retirement, CalPERS, classified retirement, workers' compensation, unemployment, Social Security, Medi-Cal, Medicare, and health and welfare benefits. Books and supplies, and then services, other operating expenses, basically PG&E contracted services, and then a small sliver of transfers out.
What are the transfer in and transfer out? That's not inter-district transfer.
They are inter-fund transfers. So we transfer dollars to our cafeteria fund, and we transfer dollars, a small amount, to help support our child development fund.
Yeah, so an inter-district transfer student would just come under the regular ADA that would be.
Through the revenue limit, yes. So in the past, we've made contributions from our unrestricted side of the House to our restricted, and those are basically our categorical programs, things that we receive money for prescribed programs, and so this last year, we reduced those contributions to the, some of those prescribed programs from $902,000 in 1112 to $557,000 in 1213. So that's, was a pretty significant savings for our general fund unrestricted portion. So some of the transfers out that we have to other funds, I mentioned Child Development Fund and our Child Nutrition Program. In the past, the contribution from the general fund to child nutrition was in excess of $300,000. So we changed the program. We have a company providing meals instead of cooking them in our kitchens, and so we greatly reduce our costs in that area.
Do you want questions as you go, or at the end? I'll take, I'll ask questions. Doesn't matter.
Sure, so you don't lose your question.
Great, thank you. Tell me what the child development, I realize it's a very small amount, but I'm not understanding what that fund represents.
That fund represents the contract that we have with the YMCA. The dollars flow through the district. We contract with YMCA to provide that service.
These are federal head start dollars.
But certainly, it's more than $199 that flows through the district.
That's correct. That program operates about $145,000 to $154,000, depending on their enrollment, depending on the number of children.
$150,000.
$150,000.
Okay.
$154,000 to $145,000, depending on the students that they serve.
And then in terms of child nutrition, you're saying you contracted the meals, which means that you reduced the staff costs?
We reduced staff costs, that's correct.
But that's not the total cost of the program, it's just the inter-fund transfer. It's a certain amount that's covered.
That's, that's the amount that was coming from the general fund and going into our food service program fund, or Child Nutrition Fund, and that's Fund 130.
And the rest of the program would be funded by federal national school lunch dollars?
Federal and state, and also local sales.
So what you're saying is that the federal money doesn't cover the actual costs of providing the food that you're providing to the students?
It doesn't cover the entire cost of the program.
Okay.
So, Mr. Bonet, the $199 for child development, are you saying that's the amount transferred from the general fund to the child development program?
That's correct.
Okay. So, so in other words, even the contract for child development didn't pay for the child development program, the state contract?
That's right. We're, this last year, we held them to that, well, with the exception of $199.
If they're only $200 off, I'll make up.
Right, yeah.
That's fine.
So this page is our multi-year projections. We had our 1213 estimated actuals, and actually, there are unaudited actuals now. And our ending fund balance total is $5,091,099. That top line is our revenues of $11 million, expenses of $9, and excess of revenues over expenses of $2.1 million. And then as you go across in that middle yellow line, you'll see what the projected, I'll call it income for lack of a better term right now, of $61,000, and then we start some deficit spending of $313,239. Now, I need to tell you, these are very conservative numbers, and after P, after our first interim report, those numbers in all likelihood will go down considerably, and by the second interim, they'll go, they may go down a little more. And I say that because in building the budget for 1314, we're very conservative with our estimates of income, and we were, excuse me, with the revised budget for 1314, we're still unclear with some of the technical aspects of the new funding formula. So those still are changing at the state level, so some of those rules are changing currently, and we hope it gets a little better as we go down and the legislature makes its mind up on technical aspects of things like necessary small schools. The impact, particular to Emeryville, is that we became basic aid for one year in 1213, and wow, how LCFF impacts that for districts like ours in the current budget year.
Can you explain that a little bit more for people who don't understand what basic aid is, and a refresher?
Basic aid in, under the revenue limit formula, is where districts receive tax money, local tax money, in excess of the state revenue limit, thus allowing the state not to pay districts, quote, "a basic aid amount." In the past, that amount was about $120 per ADA, but with the deficits that we've had, the state hasn't been funding that amount.
The deficit the state has.
The, that's correct. Thus, the deficit the state has had.
State deficits, not school district deficits.
So in that revenue limit formula, over the last few years, that deficit factor has been about 22% for school districts. So we were operating with 22% less dollars the last, this last year in 1112, and 12, and 1213.
But part of the reason why the basic aid, we became basic aid, had to do with the dissolution of redevelopment.
That's correct. So the.
Speak to that a little bit. Yeah.
The County Controller's Office was holding redevelopment agency funds because the city was contesting, or the RDA was contesting a technical aspect of a tax increment as it applied to RDAs. Statewide, this impacted all districts statewide that had RDAs. Los Angeles Unified was greatly affected, and they had a lawsuit with regard to this with the state of California, which was recently resolved, which stated that those monies revert back to school districts. So we kind of hit a bonanza in 1213 with regard to those RDA monies, which made us basic aid for one year.
It's a one-time bonanza.
It's a one-time, it's a one-time impact on the school districts' funds.
Is that why the 11.3 is significantly more than, for example, the 1314 9.9 budget?
That's correct. Yes.
And that was enough to put you into basic aid?
That was enough to put us in the basic aid.
And now he's saying the status is of basic aid under LCFF may, may, what, reduce our, somewhat? Because they're assuming we're always going to be basic aid when we're not. We were just, so.
Right.
So we need the state to figure out how they're treating districts like us who skipped into basic aid for one year, but really our revenue limit district.
So other districts that were basic aid for quite some time weren't imposed a 22% deficit factor on their revenue limit dollars. So states took dollars away from the state categorical funds that that, those districts received, and that impacts us because that happened to us in 1213, for one year only. So that's an issue that's, one of those technical issues that's being resolved at the state level with regard to districts that were basic aid for one year.
So there are other districts, others besides EUSD, I'm sure, that had redevelopment money that was in influx for one year that this happened to? And do you, do you kind of check in with those other districts in terms of the state's response, or is this a, kind of, you're on your own?
Kind of, you're on your own. However, there's enough of us talking at the state level that people are listening. Joel Montero, who's the Chief Operating Officer for FICMAT, which is a statewide financial management crisis intervention team, something like that, is aware of it and has been discussing this in Sacramento with the Department of Finance.
I just have a quick question. What assumptions were used on the parcel tax as far as the projection looking forward?
Basically, just.
Straight line or?
Straight line for what we received this last year moving forward.
So for the next two years, it's a straight line?
Yes.
John, I have another question. Is this an issue that we should have of the school district lobbyists up in Sacramento informed of and actively working on? Because we cannot leave it to the good offices of the state government. If our lobbyists aren't aware of it and aren't working on it, I would hope the school district would direct them to have a heads up on it.
I think that's a good idea as soon as we, this is just emerging in the last 30 days or so, so I think we want to get our facts straight before we arm our lobbyists.
But don't leave it to the state to help you out.
We're not just leaving, we also happen to have a school board member who's very active in some of these activities at the state level, so I think.
We could use some butt.
We're one of the luckiest state school boards in the state, but I think your point's very well taken. As soon as we have the right information, if we, looks like we're running into a road block, then, then we may also have to employ that approach.
And we have been in contact with Towns and Public Affairs, and they're watching it.
So before you change to the next slide, if you, if I may, I'm concerned about the projected 1415 and 1516 negative revenues minus expenditures numbers, and I just, you know, I feel like I need to get an answer if, if that's, doesn't look sustainable to me, if those numbers, and I know you said you, they would be revised likely, but it just doesn't look like a balanced budget.
Well, they will, it isn't right now, but I'll tell you, my 1314 numbers are wrong, and I say that because the LCFF numbers, those numbers are going to be changing until the state makes up, until they take care of all the technical problems with that. I've used, there's three spreadsheets that are out in, at least that I've used for the LCFF calculation, and they're all three different numbers, so I use the most conservative one. So as we work through this, that's why I'm saying those numbers will go down as I get to the first interim reporting and the second interim.
And let me say, as also a member, Wes, the, the school district has typically always deficit budgeted, but there's been very few years of that, I can remember since being involved with the district, that we've ever actually deficit spent for actuals. So as Mr. Bonet said, you know, this is just a budget that he's put together based on some projections and assumptions, but like I said, in years, we've never deficit spent, typically.
And the funding for the LCFF ramps up as it goes further out into the next, I think, seven or eight years. So the increases are smaller in the beginning as opposed over the next three to five years, and the numbers in 1516 are more shaky. The further you go out and do projections, the more wrong they are.
So.
The further you go out and do projections, the more wrong they are. But they're the best- but they are our best guess at the time I put this together.
Plus, going back to parcel tax, that was flat for those years going forward.
That's correct.
So we know we have more dollars coming in on the parcel tax, which is not reflected in that number.
So I have to say, I, from the school board's standpoint, we feel very, very lucky to have Mr. Bonet as our CFO. And to be particularly in this time of change where the rules are changing, and our approach is always to project conservatively so that we're very aware of what we have to negotiate with the state. It keeps the fire under us because we do not want to make cuts. And so we, this gives us the reality to work with on the worst case. And then we negotiate to the best case. And I, I can say we've had no better negotiator than Mr. Bonet representing us with the state.
There's, there's another point to this that is, is really important. The Department of Finance puts out its numbers, and they already build in a conservative projection. School Services has shared that with us. We went to a workshop last week on the budget, school budgets. And then from that, after the Department of Finance does that, then we then create our budgets. And we also work with School Services, who gives, they have a calculator. And then their calculator is conservative. And so there's three levels of conservative projections that are essentially put into that. And but, and from a small schools perspective, small school district perspective, we have a program, K-12 program, that we are striving to maintain. And so in our assumptions, as we, as we put our, our projections, our multi-year projections together, which we have to do for the county, we have to show and demonstrate that we can essentially sustain a K-12 school system. And, you know, as Trustee Dwin said, you know, we are deficit budgeting, not deficit spending. And you can see from our healthy ending fund balance that we are- and he'll, he has a couple more slides to share with you as well regarding that.
I think one other very quick point to point out is the only reason we can afford to deficit budget is because of our reserves.
We do not want to repeat history again.
So because we have healthy reserves, we can take a little bit of a risk and not lay off staff. But, you know, we have had to lay off staff in the past. It's not something we want to do. But given our healthy reserves, we're able to take some, some risks with the future.
Are those reserves, the 4% reserves that were mentioned in the presentation?
I have a slide that breaks out the reserves.
Okay, can I ask you two more questions then before we leave this? Which is, do you have this broken out in terms of per pupil spending? That's how the money is calculated by the state, even in LCFF, which I'm not as familiar with?
I can do that. It's not reflected in these slides.
Because my, when the revenues are projected to go down from this year to next, my question is, is that to reflect enrollment decline or?
No, that's the, that's the change from the one-time, uh, basic aid amount to the LCFF funding formula. So the, the one-time spike in income was strictly from the RDA, Los Angeles Unified settlement with the RDA.
It was a settlement? It wasn't just a-
Well, it was a, it was, they, they won the case.
The redevelopment agencies around the state were putting money into an account for years, years and years. And that money was building up. And then when they won the case, that money was distributed on a one-time basis. So it's, it's many, many years of funds all coming in at once. Unfortunately, it's, it's caused other problems, and we're, and we're dealing with that.
So that was not money from the Emeryville RDA, but it was a state fund you're saying that was distributed?
Well, it's Emeryville's portion of the state, but it's many, many years of funds.
It wasn't just the kickback from the due diligence review that we went through and other?
No.
Okay. I'd like a little more history on that, because I'm not as familiar with that. I don't know if the rest of the council already knows about that fund, but it's something I wasn't familiar with.
I'll have to revisit that with the county comptroller, Carol Orth.
Just to get a background. And then my final question is, Member Brinkman asked about the parcel tax and the projections going forward. And you mentioned in two years, and I know this only goes through the next two years. But I'd just like to understand better what the future, the long-term future of the parcel tax is or, or what the plan is around that.
Well, right now, I'm budgeting on a straight line. But there are projects that just aren't complete yet that will hit those tax rolls. And we, we contract with NBS, was a consultant, with regard to parcel tax. I'll see if they can't get that information for me for, by at least by second, second reporting period, interim reporting period, which will also reduce the deficit spending in the out years.
My other question is, what, does the parcel tax need to be renewed? And at what level? And what are the plans around that? Because I don't think it's in perpetuity.
The school board hasn't made that decision yet, so. We're in the process of gathering information.
Do you know how long this current parcel tax is good for?
But because we are required by the county and state to deliver multi-year projections to demonstrate that we can run a school district for three years, we're required to actually begin our parcel tax work earlier than it might normally, one might normally think. Because otherwise, in that, in that out year of 1617, if we were to show, if we were to go out for the parcel in 1617, it would be too late to present that, to present that to the county. And then we could be, it would, it would appear as though we were back in, you know, an unhealthy situation.
Because without the parcel tax, I'm just going back to the very first page, which has the revenues. You said it's the main portion of the 3.7 other local revenue compared with- sorry, it's a little hard to read the numbers.
Yeah.
Six. So it's, it's more than half of the state funds that we're receiving. It's, it's equal to a third of the total.
Our parcel tax is about $2.4 million. A little more than that.
So this would look very different if the parcel tax was taken out of the revenue?
Huge.
Oh, absolutely.
And we don't have to do that until 2017.
Mr. Bonet, the, what is, what, in 1415, what's the LCFF state aid projection based on?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
No, but I, did you increase it or?
Yes, it does get increased.
I don't know by how much.
I, yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the, this year, over 1213, well, the LCFF is an eight-year phase-in to get to a, a target level of funding. And this year, the state as a whole took a 11.7% step toward that target. And next year, based on where we're at currently with revenues, the, the state board told our implementation working group that the estimate is 16.4%. So it's an, it's a bigger step than the current estimates are than we took this year, which probably is not what the-
I don't-
Assuming it's a higher level than the conservative numbers you're being given from School Services or elsewhere.
Well, I think, as it been said, these are, this is a snapshot. The purpose of this agenda item, as I understand it, is to give the, you know, both parties a chance to see this snapshot. But as we've learned in California, funding for schools is a moving target. And, and so luckily, we have an excellent marksman for that moving target to negotiate the changes.
And I think what we have to really understand with, this is the biggest change in 40 years-
That's right.
-that school financing will be partaking in. There's a lot of uncertainties right now regarding how it will be funded in the future. So at this point in time, all districts within the state have to be very conservative about their projections. Because to be honest, you know, no one knows right now what the future looks like. So, I mean, his 1415s is a very, very conservative number. And hopefully, that will increase. But at this point in time, because of the uncertainties of how the, how schools will be funded in the future, it really is best at this time to be at its most conservative as you can.
And I think it's also really important for you to know that, you know, public education in the state's not going away. And that Governor Brown, to his credit, has actually opened the conversation about funding, funding for public education in the state. And, and I think that we're probably in for a much more positive picture. I mean, this is the, this is a very, very positive step that we have. Just him even able, being able to get the LCFF passed and begin this conversation. We are 49th in the nation, and we should not be. We should be in the top 10. And this begins the conversation. So I don't want this to end on a bleak note of, you know, of uncertainty. I think it's a very, very positive step. It's just that because, you know, of this transition, with this transition, we have to present to you as, as conservative as we can in order to ensure the fiscal health of this school district.
All right, we're past our time for this item, but-
That's due to my question.
That's okay? I just say that to-
I'll speed it up.
Bring us back on focus, okay?
So our multi-year projections, some of the assumptions we've included, step and column increases are in place for our salaries and benefits. We've used a 5% increase for utilities year over year. We have taken out some federal income and expenses out of 1415 and 1516 that totaled about $212,000, because we have a grant that's going away. Again, the projections are conservative. And the expectation is that by the second interim, which is about February 20th, that the deficit amounts will be reduced in the out years. So our ending fund balance, some of the breakdown for that. For 1213, our revolving cash is $10,000. Our designated for economic uncertainties, which is our 4% requirement by the state, is met out to 1516. We have $454,000 that we're going to be using for technology replacement. We're doing that currently. So that amount will drop also by second interim. So that's part of some planned deficit spending in fiscal year 1314.
It also is related to the smarter balance assessment, which is the new assessment system, which is an online test-taking system that we have to get up to speed for as well. So we're taking all of that into account.
We have a reserve for facilities of $2.9 million. We have our general fund unappropriated amount at 1.1. And we have restricted ending balance of $141,000. And that's basically some categorical items that either were deferred or haven't been budgeted yet.
I have a question. So whether there, what are the projections that have the reserve facilities line item increasing over the couple of years as we have up to here?
So we took some of that one-time dollars from the RDA and put that in that.
I understand for 1213, but how is it increasing in 1314, 1415?
It increases because there's a, we receive income from community redevelopment, specifically for facilities that weren't associated with the revenue limit. Those dollars are straight-lined, but that's why that increases.
So those dollars will be coming in in 1314 and 1415?
That's correct.
When do they end? Do you know?
I do not. I'm trying to schedule a, a meeting with County Comptroller's Office to get more information on that. So our ending fund balance ranges from 5 million and then out to 1415 to 4.5. With still maintaining our 4% state requirement and a healthy unrestricted fund balance. These are the fund balances for all of our other funds besides the general fund. Cafeteria's small because we do make a contribution, but we do keep some cash in there. We have a small deferred maintenance fund. We have a special reserve for retiree benefits, $35,000. The building fund, where all of our bond proceeds are, is $56 million. We have a capital facility, capital facilities fund, 3.3, which is basically developer fees. And then our bond interest and redemption fund, which is controlled by the County Comptroller's Office. We don't touch that fund at all.
Mr. Bonet, the capital facilities fund, is some of that part of the reserve for our facilities that we'd be looking at as reserves for the new facility?
No. The capital facilities fund, some of that is from MOU, I'm looking for Roy. MOU 1?
And 2.
And 2, and developer fees. Majority, I believe, are developer fees.
Can I ask, the capital facilities money, what is the plan to use that?
For ECCL project.
So it'll be folded into the, the bond money above?
So the overall fiscal health of the district is very, looks very good for the next three years with the idea that the state will be increasing funding for schools for the next eight years. We do maintain our operations and maintenance budget. And we assume that budget will be reduced when we open the new school. And as of today, in that facility reserve account, we have just about six years of capital reserve funds to meet the MOU 3 requirement at, at this time. That's it. Sorry it took so long.
I just have a couple, a couple of questions. First, can you talk briefly about what you factored in for the developer fees? Was that straight-line too? Because that's-
Actually, that went down considerably, because it does go up and down. And I believe I bumped it down to one of its lowest years.
Okay, but we will have more developer fees coming in, so that should help improve some of those numbers.
Yes.
And the other thing is, I want to thank all the taxpayers. Because if you would have seen the financials 10 years ago compared to today, I mean, it's astounding. We had nothing in any of the categories 10 years ago. And have reserves, it's, I never thought, every single day, that we would actually have $4 or $5 million in reserves. So I mean, but it's, you know, the foundation was set by the taxpayers approving the parcel tax twice. So thank you, taxpayers.
Well, the taxpayer dollars really aren't factored in the reserves except for the dollars that we're going to use for the replacement of technology. So parcel tax really isn't a big portion, except for that replacement of technology account. We're using parcel tax for that and putting those dollars back in the classroom. And just one last comment. Deficit budgeting or deficit spending doesn't lead districts to bankruptcy. What leads districts to bankruptcy is a lack of cash. And with the reserves that we have, we have plenty of cash to operate our district.
All right. Any public comment on the ESU, EUSD financials?
Great report.
Thank you, Mr. Bonet.
It's always great when we have millions in the bank.
That's right.
And again, I have to remind people, that bottom line is because of this bizarre redevelopment change. We've got these one-time windfalls. So I, I think it's dangerous to assume that they're, salaries are based on year-to-year income. If you hire people based on one-time income, it's a good way to get in the kind of trouble this district has gotten into before. But because of these, because of that cushion, as the state goes up and down in its funding, it means we can assure our teachers stable employment. Because we have the cushion that- because we have the cushion that when it dips down, we don't have to lay a bunch of people off. And so I think that's, that's the real value of the policy that the district has held of maintaining enough reserves for the volatility in state funding.
I think we should move on to the next item.
Yeah. I have, I have one other question that we'll not answer tonight, but I'm just gonna raise it so that we have it in, uh, in mind, which is just around, um, how we compensate our teachers and how our teachers' salaries compare with other districts nearby or similarly sized districts. There aren't very many as small as ours, I know. Um, and what, what that looks like, um, and how that's projected because we know that retaining the best teachers is the most important part of any educational program, more important even than the buildings and facilities that we build. So I would love to hear more about that at some point.
I'll just briefly, briefly speak to that because we recently took a look at that coming out of negotiations. And our teachers are, I believe, in the top three total comp in the county uh, with regard to salary and health and welfare benefits.
Great. If you have any further information, that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, we're putting a fact sheet together, um, and we'll be distributing that to the board and the board can share that at the next city schools meeting.
All right. The next item is the third-party agreements. Library, are you taking this, Mr. Miller?
I'm going to start.
Okay. We've got, uh, on the agenda forty-five minutes for it, but, but that went over about twenty minutes. So do you have a...
I think we should take power much when we need.
Okay. Well, I guess, I, I guess my question is to the...
You have to decide if you wanna do that.
Right. Do, do we wanna...
You have to take a vote.
Yeah, because...
In every committee and public, uh, meeting that I ever have, we go until we're done.
So we have our, our bylaws, as Member West pointed out to us last time, limits this city schools meeting to two hours. So if we, if we want to extend it, we can do it by motion or we can amend the agenda.
We don't limit our committees, we don't limit anything else.
Well, can we wait till we get to about seven twenty-five and, and let's see where we're at?
Yeah, just roll it. Come on.
If we fail, then we can expand.
Why should we limit this one?
So everybody's been forewarned to be brief, so we'll try to do that. Okay. Um, I'm not going to do the, the main part of the presentations to you others, Will, but I'm gonna do a little bit of a context setting here before we start. The work that we've all been doing for so many years now is really all about partnerships and that's reflected in even the, the banner that you see for the school district all the time about partnerships powering student success. It obviously powers community success as well. Um, and so third-party agreements, it sounded awfully dry to me as I was thinking about how to talk with you about this this evening. And, and that, it's really about the partnerships. And that's, so what you're gonna be hearing about tonight are, are two of those major partnerships, one having to do with, um, health and wellness and the other having to do with library services. But I also want to put that in context. Um, the main partners here are the ten of you sitting at this table. I mean, the, the city and the school district are the main partners that we are all talking about. Um, and the joint occupancy agreement that we're working on establishes you two as the lead partners of this whole enterprise. Third-party, um, as it's referred to here, really has to do with the next tier down. Um, the joint occupancy partners are you two. Um, below that however, or within that, let's say, are some of these other major partnerships that you will, that we have been developing and that you will continue to develop. Um, and honestly, they will change over time. Um, you two, the city and the school district are really the, the permanent rocks. You're the, the anchor tenants, however we want to put it. Um, and the other, the other third-party agreements, um, may last for decades, um, but they all, may also change over that period of time. So, so that's the first piece of, of kind of the big picture here. Um, tonight, what I'd like to have you, uh, tonight's agenda is really about, uh, being able to bring all ten of you up to speed on where we are in the discussions about those two major partnerships, um, with a health clinic entity and with a, a library, potential library entity. I also want you to recall that the joint occupancy agreement, which you're also currently reviewing, does describe these third-party agreements and specifically, um, has a paragraph or two, um, on each of these. And, and what that joint occupancy agreement says is that the city and the district will work together on each of these major partnerships, uh, each of these major, major third-party, um, agreements. And that's, that's definitely the, not only the intent, but, but that's the plan. Um, secondly, um, I, I want to say that the, uh, that legal structure, the joint occupancy agreement, uh, anticipates these third-party arrangements and it allows for flexibility in them over time. Um, you and you two, the city and the school district, uh, you're joined by something that the, the State Board of Education has even approved and you are joint occupant partners. Um, these other entities will be in, in some informal agreements with you, um, but at a, at a bit less, lesser stature than that relative to the center of community life. Same is true of the facilities design. Um, the facilities design can accommodate a lot of different future and even perhaps near-term, um, third-party agreements. So the, the way that the facility has been designed, the health clinic space can be a school-based health clinic. It can be a community health clinic. It, it may actually have even other, um, realities that we have yet to think about. And the same thing with the library. Um, the library can and will function as a school library. Um, it can and probably will function as, um, some, uh, a- aspect of a public library and, and def, defining that is very much, you know, yet to come. Um, but the facility itself can work, um, on a number of different levels and with a number of those different futures. Uh, and we'll talk a little bit further about that. And so then finally, the last thing I want to say before introducing the other folks that'll talk is that, um, for both the health clinic and for the library partnerships, we're at a perfect time at this juncture to have a much deeper relationship, um, between the city and the school district in both of these program areas to move forward and, and actually negotiate and form these partnerships. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Juliette Dunn, who's the district's director of, of wellness, I'm gonna let her describe, um, where we are with the health clinic work. And then following that, um, we'll have, uh, a, a discussion with the, or you'll have a discussion with the, the folks who have been helping us look at the very beginnings of, of creating, um, an operating library that's both for school and for the public. We'll want your input tonight on two fronts. For the health clinic, on how you see the city and the school district developing a deeper partnership in that arena and taking that forward with the medical provider partner. Um, we don't have a big overarching agreement yet with that partner for what services are going to be delivered in the ECCL and how the city and the district are going to be working together to do that. So we'd love your input about that. Um, and then with the, with the, uh, library aspect, um, we know that we will need to run an RFP to find a library partner. Um, we're thinking that the, that sort of RFP could run, um, perhaps bringing you a draft RFP for your input, um, late this calendar year and then actually conducting that process and making a selection, um, towards spring of next year. Um, but again, um, I would love your thoughts about actually developing that RFP and, and if you have any, um, different thoughts about timeline, that's welcome as well. So Juliette, we'll start, um, and then, then we'll talk with the, the library folks as well.
This is gonna be short, um, and if you have any questions afterward, please let me know. Over the past ten years, Emory USD has developed a credible wellness program. The school-based health center is a place to house those resources. The wellness center will house the following departments: the school-based health center, the family resource center, psychological and social services for Emory USD. But don't let the name fool you. We've always considered Emeryville community in our planning, especially concerning health resources. ECCL is a place where all those plans can be housed. Our initial desire ten years ago was to fill the need of a lack of any medical or social services for our students and families within the close area. We've expanded the outreach to the community because Emory families are community and citizens. What is good for them is good for our shared community. The opportunity exists to include and enhance an already existing partnership between Emory USD and the city of Emeryville. Currently, the family resource center, as an example, resides at the Emeryville Recreation Department and we serve schools and community families. We've always worked with the recreation department and senior services, thank you Cindy, from beginning to the planning services for all of these needs. We've partnered with Alameda County so, uh, School Health Services, which is part of Alameda County Health Department. They've opened twenty-plus school-based health centers. Last year, they agreed to work with us and put out an RFP for a medical lead. The two leads that were considered by them were La Clinica de la Raza and Lifelong Medical Services. They chose Lifelong and awarded them the planning grant to help with this facility planning, with funding and with all the other architectural designs we were working on at the time. They along, along with our other partners, the California Health Centers Association, which actually recommended us going through Alameda County Health Services and Alameda County School Health Services, um, are working with us on planning things to go into the school-based health center. The wellness department last year, along with UCSF and the Alameda County, no, UCSF and the School-Based Health Centers Association, did a needs assessment. We went to the seniors, we went to the families, we went to the students. We talked about what do you want in a health center? What would be good for you? What are you looking at? What's a priority? And so we have that, that plan and we're using it to give us some ideas on what we should look at in terms of the community. The financial stability of the clinic is based on maximizing the services that they're going to provide, either through insurance payments, from grants from the county, as well as the federal government. There are many different types of grants. Once you have a brick-and-mortar institution that actually work with school-based health centers, and I know that the state, they've been lobbying, the California School-Based Health Associates, Health Centers Association, too many names, too many different people here. Anyway, are out there lobbying to make sure that we get federal as well as state money for those types of things, all school-based health centers. The opportunity, opportunity exists for us to include a broader community input regarding programs and services. Lifelong is very interested in expanding their outreach to our community. To that broader conversation, we welcome any input and want to further city partnerships. I've worked continually with Melinda Chin, Cindy Montero, and Pata Keith, O'Keefe, on this product and this project in the, from the inception, ten to twelve years ago. Lifelong has lent us their design expertise to help us with the preliminary architectural plans for the clinic. So far, the space is general enough to function as a school-based clinic and a community clinic. We have not worked out the financial documents, final operating documents and written any MOUs. This is a perfect time for the city to be a part, to be at the table, to discuss this and to work with us, Lifelong, as well as city services, which we are working with all the time, to help us to figure out what else we need to do and what else the community needs. Do you have any questions or thoughts, clarifications?
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so Lifelong's role, you said they got a grant in order to help with the design of the project at this point. And after that is completed, after the project's completed, we don't have any extended contract with them, but they are a potential partner for actually providing the services or folding in other organizations? 'Cause I don't know much about that organization.
Lifelong Medical has been, um, designated by the county as our medical lead. So they basically...
Medical lead, is that what you said?
Medical lead. What do you, you need a, you need a medical, uh, lead agency like Kaiser or... They're like Kaiser, they're like Sutter, they're like all of those. They're a medical provider and services, um, in the Bay Area. And what they do is to help us to set all this up, but they are also medically, they will be running the clinic, basically.
Okay, so that's...
They're doctors, they're dentists and all the rest. And that was done through the county because the county designates money, uh, for the school-based health center when you have brick-and-mortar. And they bring those grants to, to fore because of the medical lead and through the medical lead.
So is the grant just covering the design phase or does the grant extend into the actual services?
Right now, as soon as we get a brick-and-mortar, the grant will be expanded. But right now, it's just covering the design phase. We couldn't get the full grant because we don't have a building.
Facility. And do you anticipate though that the grant through Alameda County will cover the costs of having this clinic and like...
It will cover the initial costs.
The initial costs.
We always have to, as any clinic, go out and make sure that we get people who come to the clinic, bring their insurances, look at Medi-Cal, Medicaid, fundraise, get other grants. I mean, this is not something that, that, you know, it's like anything else. But it will cover the basic cost initially. And then Lifelong also will be out there rendering services and looking to find monies and trying to bring things in because they want it to be a success too because they're, your, when they, when you become Emory Unified School District's clinic's client, you become their client.
Right. Thank you for explaining that.
Jennifer, another, another point is that the, um, the financial model for running these clinics is that they're Medi-Cal reimbursable clinics. So, so the business model is, is one that is used with, uh, La Clinica de la Raza, Lifelong, and several other, um, uh, medical agencies that run clinics, uh, in the Bay Area. So...
Which is one of the reasons we're revenue neutral for us.
Right, for us. That's what I, that's what I'm trying to get at, I guess, is that, um, that as long as they have adequate number of people using their services, that it is revenue neutral for, for providing the facility.
Right. I could also, uh, remind you about the presentation we had from Alameda County Health at the last meeting where Alameda County Health has stated that it's their intention to use school-based health clinics as a strategy to expand, uh, access to health services. And I know Lifelong Medical is one of the top three providers in terms of community health clinics in Alameda County, uh, along with Asian Health Services and Clinica de la Raza. So, um, uh, we have one of the best. Um, I, I should also say, they also provide services for our residents at the California Hotel. And, uh, I think it would really be terrific at the appropriate time once, uh, the school and the city have worked with, uh, um, the health providers to get a list of the services that they think they could provide to have them come and do a presentation on, um, what services they're intending. Um, and, uh, 'cause I know that, um, their ability to see clients is how they fund their work.
Most definitely. Yes, Ruth?
So, um, Juliette, I, I just want to say first off, thank you, thank you, thank you. You were one of the first hires as we wrapped our minds around, uh, a full-service community. And, um, you started the wellness, all the wellness initiatives from the get-go. And, um, uh, this has turned into quite a sophisticated operation, so under your, under your guidance and leadership and stewardship. So first of all, I want to give you big thanks and kudos to you. Um, uh, and I imagine it's been, uh, professionally satisfying to see this grow and develop. Um, so with that being said, I, I want to put a couple of, um, uh, kinda exploratory things out there. Um, first, the funding mechanisms for health services is, is its own, uh, study session. And, um, which I can actually talk about because of my day job to some extent. Um, but, um, uh, I think the kinds of medical services that we need have to include vision and dental. Um, and those, Medi-Cal has cut, has fluctuated over time about whether they're gonna cover those things. When, um, they cut out dental a few years ago and they're bringing it back to some extent. But if you're dealing with an abscess tooth or something, you know, that, that has significant ramifications health-wise because it's so close to the brain. So those things really need to be, be taken care of. So I think dental and dental and vision are often overlooked in terms of other kinds of medical services. So those are priorities from this council member that we be able to provide those. Um, and the mental health services, which have already started, um, but, but, uh, need to be enhanced as well. Um, one thing I would ask, and I, I'm sure Lifelong is trying to tap into every revenue reimbursement scheme there is, but the affordable... scheme there is, but the Affordable Care Act and California, which has embraced the Affordable Care Act with great gusto, has decided to expand Medi-Cal eligibility to 138% of the federal poverty levels, depending on household size, those numbers change. So, with that, I think there are five plans offered in Alameda County, Undercover California. And we would need to find out if Lifelong, who, which of those plans has contracts with Lifelong Medical to be able to access payment for them for that. And that should, now that the call center for Cover California is up and running this week, but like I said, it was 5 million hits the first day on the website, we should be able to find out if Lifelong is in any of those plans' contracts. But we need to, we need to make sure that whoever gets in there to actually provide the service is a covered entity under any of the Alameda-offered plans, Undercover California. So, those plans are here to stay. So, we need to make sure we can line up to, and have contracted providers under that.
It's interesting that you mentioned two things that I was thinking about today. One of the surveys, the survey that we did with UCSF and the School-Based Health Association, the number-one desire by most of the people, whether they were seniors, students, or families, was dental care. And Lifelong does that. And we have two dental seats that we've already put into the plans for the School-Based Health Center, because it's one of the best ways to bring in revenue, surprisingly, for a school-based health center. The other part was that I heard a commercial this morning with the chief operating officer for Lifelong, and they talked about Cover California, and they talked about the number to sign up. So, I have this feeling that they are very much intimately involved in that process. And we will find out exactly which ones they are participating in, because they recognize and want to reach out to all parts of the community and want to do their best to make sure they're covered. They cover people, and people can come in and get the services.
Yeah, I know Kaiser's a plan in this county. Alameda Alliance is another plan, and maybe Lifelong contracts with them, I don't know. But if they contract with more than one plan, that would be great.
I'll find out.
The other thing is, as well as being a contracted entity under a Cover California plan, to make sure they're Medicare-certified, as well as Medi-Cal-certified, because then we can serve the disabled and senior populations.
Most definitely.
So, those would be necessities, from my perspective.
And I will be calling you.
Okay. Yeah.
I have a quick question. I appreciate what Ruth said about having a study session about the-
Care finance?
Yeah, for the financing for the school-based health clinic. And that's, that's good. I would like to see that. I want to better understand the funding mechanism. But I also want to see the budgets of a couple of school-based clinics, and see what they're spending, and see what their revenue is, in very concrete terms, so that I can understand and have a better idea of it as well. So, if we do have a future study session on that, I just want to make sure that that's a part of it as well.
We could have case examples.
Yeah, Lifelong runs two clinics, school-based health clinics, also Alameda County Health Department, because they, the school health department, because they have 20-plus clinics they can bring, we'll have both of those entities at the meeting to explain exactly how they interact, what goes on, how do they do it, and what it looks like in the future and what it looked like in the past. So, we'll have both of those people come. Okay?
I have a question that maybe Mr. Bonet might know. Our free reduced lunch population is 70-odd percent, sometimes I see 80%. The question is, what, do we know what percent is free? Qualified for free lunches, it's 130% of poverty, which would meet the new expanded Medi-Cal, 135%.
I don't know that off the top of my head. Our unduplicated count with EL and low income is 74%. The form where I get that information from does have that breakdown, so I can bring that back to the board or city schools.
Sure. But I would think, you know, at least 30% or so of our student population probably falls under the free or the Medi-Cal limit.
Most importantly- I didn't understand what you were saying, but in terms of, for some reason, it's just kind of not going in there. But with Medi-Cal, we have a, we have a relationship with reimbursement from MAH, which is Medi-Cal Administrative Assistance. And our percentage for Medi-Cal they have is about 43.2.
Okay. There you go. Perfect.
Can you, besides MAH, can you use TCM, Targeted Case Management, as well?
We can. We also have Leader Services, and we're doing Medi-Cal billing, which we're going to try to increase and do some things there with the people that we have on campus. We're learning how to do that. And when you try to add all of those things, and at the same time, it makes you a little crazy. So, we're trying to do that this year. But MAH and, it's up there, two different billings, reimbursement and billing. The MAH reimbursement is going through some changes right now through the federal government. But as soon as that gets all ironed out, then hopefully, we'll be able to add that into. Okay? Sorry about that.
Other questions on the health, School-Based Health Clinic presentation?
Just have one, quick one, which is, how do, what do you anticipate, or maybe another example from another school-based health clinic in terms of hours? Is this something that is aligned with school hours, or does it extend into the evening? Is it open on Saturdays? I'm just curious what kind of projection you would expect.
Well, we've been meeting Cindy and myself and Roy and the architects and Lifelong, we've been meeting and going through all kinds of different hours. Right at the beginning, we were going to start out with about 20 hours a week and then expand, depending on how many services that we needed. And we would open early for, like, the seniors would come in from 7:00 to 8:00. We'd have confidential hours for students during the day. And then in the afternoon, we would have families and community come in in the afternoon. There's a whole big spreadsheet and chart. So, we've been looking at all three of those different things to make sure that we have covered time period where we can still maintain the confidentiality for the students, but we can still take care of seniors, because God knows, students don't want to get up at 7:00 in the morning. But seniors are happy to come in and do those kinds of things. And then in the afternoon, students are in the classroom. So, we can take care of students and, you know, people who want to come in and into the, so we're thinking about all of those things. And they're all part of the planning process, and will continue to be. And hopefully, not hopefully, the clinic will be a success, and we will expand to Saturdays and Sundays, depending on fiscal-
Works out.
What's the word there?
Sustainability.
Thank you very much. And Lifelong is very amenable to that, as well as we are, you know? So, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at, because it doesn't make any sense to not do it if somebody doesn't come. But then we're also doing, we're doing, working now to get those kinds of programs started so that we can transition them, an already full-fledged product, into-
Can I suggest-
Lifelong just started a clinic in Richmond earlier in the year, operating 20 hours a week.
Can I suggest that-
McDonald Avenue.
To the extent we're working with mental health providers such as Ann Martin Center, you might want to include them in some of these discussions, because some of the hours when the clinics close, it might be possible to work with kids and counseling, so that we get double use of some of the space.
Oh, most definitely. And the Family Resource Center will have, be a part of this building, as well as our Psychological and Social Services, the school social worker and all of those folks will be in the area, also in the same building, so that we'll be open a lot more time than just the clinic itself. Okay?
So, is there articulation of what the city's desires and needs are with respect to the school-based health? Because I, I don't, I don't have that on my mind. Sounds like you've been having these conversations, that seniors coming in and families, and vision and dental is on the list, and-
I have the-
It'd be helpful for the board, the school board, to know.
Okay. One of the things that I will, I think we sent it, but I'll send it again, the assessment that we did last year with UCSF, as well as the School-Based Health Association. I think I talked to the seniors and several other different families, as well as students, and I'll send that in. And it articulates what would be the priorities and what's going on with what people want, what they desire, and what they thought was necessary in the area, both mental health, physical health, and all the rest.
So, those are the survey results you're talking about?
Those are the survey results.
My question, which I would love to see. My question was specifically, what are our city partners' priorities and desires for the services that they'd like to make sure is available to the community? Or should we have that discussion here? Or should that be a study session? Or how should we?
Yeah, we haven't had that discussion separate from our city schools meeting. So, perhaps that would be good to either agendize on the city council, so that we can have our own discussion and not use the city schools' time when we report back.
That would be a good thing, because I don't have it. Okay.
Number Brinkman, what are you going to say?
Well, I was going to say, if the students have these issues and needs, I would think the adults would have the same issues and needs. So, you know, I would think that they go hand-in-hand. If a child doesn't, you know, needs glasses, most likely, somebody in his family needs glasses, and the same thing with dental care. So, I would think it's just concurrent with what we do for the children, we do for everybody down, especially with the mental health issues, because we have, we're seeing more and more of that around our city, so.
But it'd be good to look at the demographics of the city, which is slightly different than the demographics of our school district families, and just to understand better, you know, how many folks are covered and would be, well, coverage is changing, I know.
Yes.
But how many folks might actually use these services? And if we could get a sense of that, it would be really helpful.
Okay, I'm going to, why don't we see if there's any public comment on this aspect of the presentation before we move to the library services? Any public comment on the health clinic? Seeing none, why don't we move to the second portion of our-
So, Sabrina, can you follow up so we can have our health discussion?
So, there was a slide up there that just went off for some reason, and I was going to talk to that for just a second. But I want to introduce KG Oway and Pauline Mingram. They are library operations specialists and have been working with the project in terms of advising the design and also making some feelers into the library partners that are out there and that do provide these services in the East Bay region. If I can get that, I'll get KG and Pauline to start speaking with you, but I'll try and get that slide back up, because one of the main ideas at ECL is that library is really a whole facility idea. It's not just a space within a set of facilities. And I want KG and Pauline to, as they talk to you a little bit about that, to have the image up. We tried to highlight all the various spaces and places within ECL that have library function as part of their program.
Okay. Because of your timing, I'll go ahead and, I'm KG Oway, and my partner is Pauline Mingram. And we are, have been working with the community groups, with some of the staff groups over the last three years. I've actually been, first as a volunteer, maybe five years ago, commenting before you even had your election, but congratulations on that. School and public libraries as a joint facility and joint operations are not an entirely new concept, but there are not a lot of them around, so it's a little bit unique. And this ECL is a very exciting opportunity, and I applaud you for the whole concept of the whole campus, but also the opportunity to have a school library and a public library. The district has had a school library and is very capable of running a school library for K through 12. But the concept of having, joining this and using the facility with the public library would be new to Emeryville, and it would be, again, an excellent way to maximize the use of the facility. And that's one of, I think, the really key things. And you have a shared vision that came out of the community meetings and out of the election itself, that said, we want to do this. As you know, the city already has a contract, and for many years, with the City of Oakland to provide library services that have been principally at the Golden Gate Branch Library, but also gives you access to libraries throughout Oakland and actually throughout the whole county. We visited seven joint school and public libraries that were in, two of them are in Oakland, several are in Sacramento, and a couple in Southern California. And based on the size of the population of Emeryville, is our recommendation that you do look for a partner to run the public library portion of it and work with the district librarian. And that's because there's really a great advantage to be in a partnership with one of your neighboring libraries, because it gives you an excess of purchasing power. It also brings you economies of scale on a lot of different fields. The real benefit is that you get access to much larger collections. And you share the technology, both the back-of-house technology and also the public technology. And that's really the heart and soul of what modern libraries are about. The one thing that really works well with this particular concept and with the design is that most libraries are always looking for, you know, the one thing we've heard many times, can we have a cafe? We want to, you know, we want to be Starbucks or Arpeets or something, and we have our coffee while we're reading or using library facilities. Well, in this case, there will be, there is a space for a cafe. The other thing you're always looking for is meeting rooms, because you need little study rooms, and you need, or a computer lab, a learning lab. Again, the school has, has, needs that. The library can share that, do some of the instruction in the non-school hours. Some of the other areas are the proximity to the teen lounge and the senior lounge. All of those are things that might be in a public library, but in this case, are shared in your, in your whole campus. So, all of those things are really very different than a lot of the other joint school and public library settings that we've seen, and really make it a superior project. We've been working with the architects and the school librarian and other members of both the school and city staff to develop a facility and a design, at least a preliminary design of facility, that is flexible enough and open enough to operate both as a school library and as a public library. So, the point where we have had some preliminary meetings, very preliminary, with some of your neighboring larger libraries, Oakland, where you have a contract, the city has a contract already, with the City of Berkeley and with Alameda County. And there, we've talked to them just to find out if they were interested in it. Would they, would they want to be a partner? And I will tell you, they were a little bit, I'm not going to say reluctant, but it was a kind of a new thought to them. But as we talked a little bit more, they got really excited about what Emeryville was doing. And so, all three of them are interested and have been in, again, very basic, early discussions on what this would constitute, what, what kinds of services would be available. So, that's the point, that's where we are at now. And as Roy pointed out, we would like to move forward with determining a selection process for a partner and work with the staff on perhaps a draft RFP and bring it back to you, to make sure that the elements that you are interested in are incorporated into that RFP, and then move forward so that next year, we will be able to put a, an RFP together, you can select a partner, and that they would be on board in time to do all the prep work that is going to be necessary, so that the library can open when, when the campus is complete. So, that's the part we're at now, and any questions you might have, we'd be glad to try to answer them.
Yeah, you said, you said Berkeley and Oakland, what was the third part?
Alameda County.
Alameda County?
Yes. Alameda County operates about 11 libraries. The one you might be most familiar with is Albany.
Albany?
Yeah.
That's very gratifying that they're interested in this, in this concept, and I hope we can move forward- That's very gratifying that they're interested in this concept, and I hope we can move forward with the dialogue. You're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
You mentioned that there is one shared library in Oakland.
There actually, well, there's one formal one, that's the 81st Avenue Library. That's actually on a campus with two elementary schools.
Uh-huh.
And then the second one is the Cesar Chavez Library operated by the City of Oakland. It is not formally associated with a charter school academy, but it's in the same building. And so they really do operate as a school public library, but it's run by the public library.
Okay, so the one on 81st then, I'm assuming it's partnered with OPL, not with the county? It's with Oakland Public Library?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's a branch of the Oakland Public Library.
Okay. And I have a couple more questions. I'm wondering if we can look at those models and understand how many non-school staff it takes-
Yes, exactly.
-in order to operate that, in order to have some sense of the cost. I understand that this is the first phase of doing this project, and I do appreciate the detail. Of course, when I look at the spreadsheets, I'm wondering, what is the dollar sign, the last column that goes here? And so I'm looking forward to finding out more about that. And this library, was it, I'd also, I think, like to understand, because our position is a little bit unique. I mean, we're just down the street from another library, and while, you know, we may have a, you know, Oakland might be interested in thinking about this new addition as another branch, we also give them a substantial amount of money every year, and I'm wondering what will happen there. Because when you look at what you've put together, you can see that a lot of our residents use that branch. It's very important to them. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if we bring in the county, there's, I don't think there's necessarily going to be a kind of cost shifting from one to the other, but we may be looking at actually paying two entities, and that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, I do know that in our preliminary discussions with Oakland, we did, they are considering all of those things. I mean, that's part of their interest-
Yeah.
...is how this may affect the Golden Gate Branch Library and your current contract. But your current contract is really is year-to-year, and so you don't have any future obligations if you choose not to. So anyway, that's just what you have at this point.
The other question is, there's been questions about whether or not Oakland, Emeryville can afford the cost. There's been some rather tough negotiations around what is paid for that library. So I think there's, but I think this is actually an opportunity. So I would encourage us to move to having an RFP to answer exactly these questions, rather than speculating about what may or may not happen. If we put an RFP together to ask these questions, to ask, you know, what access, you know, what reciprocal use agreements there are in terms of if a library takes operation of this, what other benefits does it bring? What's the staffing? I think Councilmember Asher has brought up some very good points, which could all be addressed in an RFP, and rather than guessing at what it might be, if we, that's called a question. And I think there's been enough preliminary, I really appreciate really years of groundwork that has been done on this.
Right.
Now let's, we've got the foundation built, let's start on the house, and let's ask, what's it going to, you know, what is it going to cost us? What are the benefits are for the residents? And then we can assess that. If we assess that, I believe you mentioned spring for a timeframe of getting results back from an RFP. If we can get RFP results back in spring, that's plenty of time for whoever we select to have plenty of, say, into, you know, how we furnish and operate. I would also ask that the RFP address the question of, are they going to operate the cafe? Or do we need a separate operator for a cafe? Or is that going to be a school program? So I think, if you could bring back to us a draft RFP, I think we can all try to bake our questions into it, and then let's get it answered from people who are actually saying what the cost will be.
Right. Just for background information, all three of the libraries, the county, Oakland, and Berkeley, all belong to the same cooperative here in the East Bay. It also includes Contra Costa County. So in terms of reciprocal services, whichever one you're partnered with brings you all of those services shared, in a shared way. Now, whether or not they want to duplicate it within a three-block radius is, you know, again, decisions that they would need to make. But in terms of the reciprocal services, borrowing from any of those libraries, it's all in the same database, and it makes you, makes Emeryville eligible for being, receiving those services.
So I'm gonna interrupt this proceeding to note that we're coming on our two-hour timeframe.
Move to continue the agenda.
Okay.
How long? Fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes? Or until we finish?
Until we finish.
Bake till done.
Bake till done?
We only have two more.
Finish this, then we have a five-minute update.
That's right.
Chair, I'm gonna have to leave.
Okay.
I just-
Any objections to that motion?
School operations in Oakland, that'd be very helpful.
Yes, actually, we do have those already.
Great, great, very good.
I have a question about, in this report, it's, maybe I'm drilling down to too much detail at this point, but there was a list of other spaces that, in the report, that says that could be used for library functions, and it includes the community plaza and the welcome center. And I guess my question is, you know, I don't get it. That's my question. I don't get how a plaza could be used for a library function.
Well, it's actually a terrific area. A lot of libraries like an outdoor space, and our weather is, you know, pretty good, half the year anyway, to use that. But when you have, oh, somebody just mentioned a posada or festa or something, you're doing that, it's a lot better to do it outside than inside. There's also other kinds of events. I mean, we've done storytelling both outside, we've done evening storytimes in pajamas. Anyway, there's other kinds of activities that could happen outside of the walls of the library. But the computer lab is one that's very important. Tutoring and study areas, for instance, part of the cafe could be used for those kinds of things. Libraries both have to be quiet and noisy. I mean, so you have to be able to separate that out, and using some of the other spaces within the ECCL really makes that easier, actually, than in a confined space.
Do we want to include food? A food space, a cafe with that?
Well, the cafe is adjacent to the library. So the cafe is here, and the library is here, and they really have, you know, can share, they can share, both share space, but- And their tables and so on. We've operated libraries with cafes, and they're both, sometimes a friend's operated, sometimes it's a totally different vendor. I mean, we haven't discussed any of those things, but they can coexist with libraries and actually are an often requested service of libraries-
Okay.
-because of Starbucks and Pete's.
Well, along those lines, I mean, I had the same question, and the cafe, I understand. I plan to get my book from the library and drink coffee in that cafe. I can't wait till it opens and bring my laptop. But the teen center game room, I mean, that's a thousand square feet in the estimate that, how is that part of a library?
Right. That's also, from a librarian's point of view, that was one of the most exciting things that we heard from the cities and city staff. And that is, in some of the libraries we visited, the teens, the pre-teens, the tweens, or whatever they're called, anyway, that's one of the greatest areas of perhaps potential conflict because of the noise and because of desire to play some games and to be a little bit more active. And so the idea that we've talked about with the city staff is that more of the active teen participants can be in the lounge, and the more academic or studious or tutoring or school-based things can be in the library proper. We've also discussed the idea of purchasing materials that can be placed in the lounge so that, again, you're making use of the space, but you're also using the library's expertise in building collections, in multimedia collections-
Yeah.
...as well as print.
If I might continue, the, I had a question about, on page seven, you had service population, if I'm reading this right, estimated for 2030. It makes sense to look to the future, but the numbers seem to be basically our current numbers, 10,000 citizens and, you know, 20% of our current daytime workforce population. So if I'm reading that right, you know, 15,000 people, that's about where we're at now, is that, is that we're likely to grow into the future? Or are we just saying we're not going to be any bigger in the workday or the resident population in seventeen?
No, the projections are for 15,000.
Residents.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, what-
Twenty-something.
Yeah, exactly.
All of them.
One of the projections that we-
So do we need to project more?
When you're pouring concrete or you're building things that are fixed, it's always hard to project how much space you need for bookshelves and for computers and so on. But one of the things that we have incorporated into that is that with, you have a finite geographical space, but there is probably going to be growth. And so technology, again, helps us in the sense that the equipment for technology is getting smaller, and the resources are becoming more prevalent online. So we kind of built in some growth for what you need now, but also what we project will happen as more and more things become in e-formats and so on. So that's part of it. But we can use this, in that part of the report, we didn't actually write that part, but we use some of the projections that the city provided us.
Maybe somewhat related question, and going back to the Golden Gate Branch, is it anticipated at all that we would continue that relationship in some respect with the Golden Gate Branch and, you know, have both places? Or we'd save money and end the Golden Gate contract and just have our own library? Or is that all part of the RFP discussion process?
I think that's a great thing to put in the RFP. I would like to point out that the City of Oakland's master plan for libraries points out that this area has a deficit of library services even with the Golden Gate Branch. The Golden Gate Branch, they tried to get money to expand it, they weren't able to get it. So they were already looking at Golden Gate not serving the needs of this community, and we're looking at this community growing in population, so the needs are increasing.
And they closed it, they shortened the hours.
They didn't shorten hours, they changed the hours.
They've shifted the hours and, but they, you know, there's still issues there.
Yeah.
And there's been issues about what, how much money they need for Emeryville. I would ask that-
Good point.
-if we're going to do an RFP, to see if we could do an RFP for a multi-year agreement, maybe, you know, like a five-year agreement, so we have some sense of a longer-term relationship. But I think your issue is a very good one, and I would not, I've valued the Golden Gate Library for years. I wouldn't want that to be damaged. But at the same time, I want, as you've said, there's an economy of scale that Emeryville doesn't have.
Right.
And if we want the best services for our kids, having an alliance with a much larger library with greater resources gives our kids the state-of-the-art resources and gives it to the community in a place where the City of Oakland's own plan has said it's underserved anyway. So I think we need to find a way to put that into the RFP.
So Oakland can pay us to serve their residents instead of the other way around?
We can call it a draw.
Moving along.
Well, yeah, okay, well, I think Member West is next, but I had one more comment, which is that I have had the ongoing question of, how do you combine the collection for an adult population and the collection for children and teen population? And I appreciate the detail in the report that sort of lays that out. I don't know if those numbers are, you know, right or correct or the best, but I have a more concrete understanding of how you would do that, and I appreciate that.
Just to your point, I think, again, in the RFP, we can ask if they have neighboring library services like Oakland, how might they, you know, Oakland might have-
More of one than the other.
...the Golden Gate be more adult and ours be more kids. So I think there's ways-
Complementary.
...to make it more complementary, but to the degree you can bring that out in our RFP, ask those questions.
Member West.
Thank you. I just had a, I saw in the report what was, would be an ideal square footage or what would be adequate, I suppose is maybe better, and I just wanted to confirm that the plans, Roy, maybe you could answer this, what the square footage is for the cafe and the library as it stands right now.
Actually, either Mark or KG may know that number off the top of their head better than I. It's in the 5,000-
Yeah, the library itself's 4,400.
I think it's 5,500 square feet, something like that.
Okay, so your analysis matched what is in the drawings it wasn't separate from?
Right.
You made it all fit, in other words, within the architect's drawings?
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question is about kind of security of materials. I mean, we have the sense of checking things out of the library, and when you kind of blow the idea of library out and put it all over ECCL, how does that work? You know, a teen center, you know, certain materials you mentioned might be there, and how do you, I'm still stuck in my, like, maybe old 20th century notion of library, so I'm trying to understand, again, about materials.
In the library itself proper, there are security gates, so whether you have a barcode or an RFID tag, so it signals it when anybody walks through that gate. We probably have to do something separately from those materials that are in the teen lounge, but they can also be, it's like they could be checked out to the lounge, not necessarily to a person, and if the person wants to borrow something, they would need to come to, you know, individually and tag it to an individual borrower. So we're really looking at, a lot of libraries do that, they put what we call deposit collections in community centers and so on, and I'm not gonna say they treat them as ephemeral, but they're not as well-secured with these gates and all that, which is an expense, so.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, I just learned actually yesterday of, I don't know if it's a branch, maybe you would know more, of the Alameda County library system, but it's within the Ashland Youth Center in unincorporated Alameda County. I actually met a person who works there, and I need to find out more, but I'm curious how they kind of have a satellite. I don't think it's a full-on branch, but they have a person and some kind of library services through their youth center, and that might be in.
Right. For the county, there's a couple of unincorporated areas, Ashland and Cherryland are two of the ones they've really been focusing on. And now that they've actually are going ahead with the rebuilding of the San Lorenzo Library, it's really going to help in that area. But those two areas just have been totally underserved, and so they, you know, short of building a whole new facility, a lot of libraries look for that and can put, you know, satellites, smaller operations in some, an existing facility. What's great about the Emeryville plan, of course, is that we'll all be here together, so that's, again, another benefit. But that's what I believe the county is doing. They have, there's J.O. libraries too, you know? That's another example.
So that's a model that I haven't been familiar with, but I think, you know, this is kind of more enhanced than that, but obviously a little less than opening a full-on Golden Gate branch kind of- Gate Branch kind of library. So it's good to see the spectrum, and maybe if there was further information about a jail library or, you know, one of these satellite branches within another center, that would be good information. Thanks for your presentation and thorough.
Another quick question, just, you know, I spend a lot of time, well, not a lot of time, but quite a bit of time at the San Leandro Library. How comparable would this library in Emeryville be to that library?
Quite a bit smaller.
A lot smaller.
I mean, I believe the San Leandro Library is about 50,000 square feet, or 45 to 50, and this is 4,400, you know. But you're smaller than San Leandro, too.
And I just want to say, San Leandro, what's amazing is how it is a community center and how it, the hours, I mean, it's open every evening, I believe, and I think all weekends, and meetings are held there, and I find it a phenomenal model and different from any other libraries that I've been familiar with. And so whatever could be incorporated from that within a certain budget and space, you know, limitations, I think, that's the heart, I think, of the ECCL idea of having a library.
I love their library.
Right. We were encouraged with the superintendent's work with the Gates Foundation and this new initiative. You know, the Gates Foundation is a generous donor to public libraries, and I've worked personally with them for maybe now 20 years. And one of the things that they really, that they've recognized is that libraries are the community facility that does the things you've described, meeting room space, cafe space, everyone from infants all the way through seniors. And so, again, that's, that's the great opportunity, and that's partly what Gates Foundation is really interested in, is other models for education. I mean, so education in a broader sense, which is what ECCL is all about.
In terms of the cafe, very briefly, my children attend a K-8 school where the middle school students have the chance to be young entrepreneurs and run a cafe every morning for the parents who are dropping their kids off. Anyone's welcome. But, you know, they spent the first month of school getting that together, I think it reopened actually this week, and I don't think it's a moneymaker, but it is a chance for the students to really understand what goes into operating a cafe and, you know, on a very small scale, this is for a half an hour in the morning kind of thing, but just thought.
You know, Castlemont High School in Oakland had operated the coffee shop at the Oakland Airport for many years, and it's one of their, one of their success stories.
Uh, Member Simon.
Can I ask if it's appropriate to have a motion at this time to ask staff to proceed with an RFP draft to come back to us for review?
So it's listed as an information item, and so I think we need to put it on as a...
Do we have consensus that that's the direction we'd like?
We could offer directions.
I just want to make sure that we're all on one page, that we'd like the RFP to proceed to draft so that we can review it.
Yeah, I can support that direction, Member Simon.
I don't hear anybody objecting. Move along.
All right. You have direction.
If there are no more comments from the committee, ask if there's any public comment on this item. All right, seeing none, we're on to our last information, oh, no, we're on Joint Occupancy Agreement Timeline.
This one, this one is really quick. This is just a chance to make sure that you and the public know that the Joint Occupancy Agreement is still proceeding forward. The city and district attorneys are working on language to iron out the last of the details that we're still discussing, and it's headed toward a, you all have had study sessions and joint study sessions and chances to meet on your own. It's headed toward the city council considering approval on November 5th, and then it's headed toward the school board considering approval on November 13th. So staff is looking forward to those approval discussions. That's the extent of that item.
Thanks, Roy.
Any public comment on that item? Seeing none. Last item is Task Force Report.
So for this one, again, I'm just going to do a quick context setting bit here and then introduce the presenter. Brief recap, the, this idea about creating a task force to look at a full-service community and a master plan of that in terms of, of an array of city and school district facilities that support that was a major discussion at city schools through most of 2012, actually. The resolution, we looked at various iterations of the resolution between June and December of 2012, and the task force members were chosen by this committee, appointed by this committee, and then they started meeting in late April of 2013. So at the very outset of those meetings, the MIG and MK Think, the consultants who have been helping to run those task force proceedings, set out a number of meetings and an agenda for those different sessions. They described six sessions, and five of those have already been conducted. Late this year, the task force will be wrapping up its recommendations for the Annie Gates and Rec Center sites. The representative from MIG is here this evening, and she'll tell you a little bit more about an additional session that's been calendared. The school district looks at this process as part of its planning for development and impacts on its various facilities, especially in light of the ECCL project, it's really important for the district to understand the future uses of its facilities. So as a planning set of documents, it's being funded by the Measure J work, and as the task force wraps up its work, the city manager and the superintendent will be talking with the city schools co-chairs about how and when to agendize the bringing back of that information, but city schools will be seeing that information at future meetings. So with that as background, Diana Sherman is with MIG, one of the consultants that's helping to accomplish this work, and she'll give you a little briefing on how the task force is doing.
So we are here tonight, hopefully we'll have a little bit of an illustration here in just a moment of the process. And I think, as Roy mentioned, we are most of the way through the process at this point, although I think we are at arguably the most critical part of it. So we were asked in collaboration with MK Think, who is leading this effort, to facilitate a process and basically run a set of six task force meetings to really open up, hopefully you can read that, graphics are the most important piece, to run a process to essentially take a look at what the needs were for a full-service community that were not being addressed by the programs either already planned for one of the school sites that is moving forward, so that includes things like this site, or that are anticipated to be met by the ECCL when it opens. And so the notion was that there would be these two sites, that the uses of which are moving over to ECCL when it opens, so it's the Annie Gates site and the Rec Center site, and they will be vacated essentially. So what are the appropriate uses moving forward for them? So what we were tasked with doing was working with MK Think to really pull together all of the resources that we've looked at across the years in terms of the planning for the ECCL, the planning for the general plan, the planning for the Park and Rec Plan, all the different cycles that we've gone through of really looking at the needs of the community and also weighing that against the needs of the community moving forward, because we do know that Emeryville will be growing, and look at where the gaps are. And working with a task force, a couple of you are task force members here tonight, but we've got council representatives, school board representatives, and a number of community residents, and so working with that group, really honing in on which, which pieces of those needs they felt were most crucial to address on these two campuses that will be available essentially. And then moving forward, MK Think, who is looking at the physical planning aspect of this, is really examining, based on the buildings that are there now and based on what might be done with those sites, using or not using those buildings, how can these sites, the two sites best accommodate what the task force prioritized programmatically? So where we are, you'll see, we've done first meeting, really setting the establishment of the task force itself, second, looking at community needs and planning context. Then we brought a number of program possibilities, and we worked with the group to really brainstorm what people could think of. We looked at models that people liked in other areas, we looked at what were the things that people were either unsure of, whether they would be addressed adequately at ECCL or felt there might still be additional needs for, or areas that we knew for sure were not going to be addressed at all, and asked for some prioritization of those. What of those were really the most critical? And we know that from the preliminary perspective, the three areas that were really identified, one of them was green space, open space, park space, some variety. One of them was arts, with the understanding that there still is a plan floating for the art center and not knowing if that will come to fruition yet, fruition yet or not. And then the last one is really looking at the needs for the adult population between the ages of 18 and 55, 60, as they move into the senior center, that there was really not a facility or a set of programs designed explicitly for that, although there are some programs at the ECCL that will peripherally pick up that group after school hours. So those were the programs that they identified as highest priority. What we have proposed doing and has been added to this agenda or to this program essentially is a community open house, because I think we heard from the task force, and I know MIG feels strongly about this as well, but it's really important to make sure that there's a check-in from the task force with the community, to make sure, we know that a lot of these needs are things that surfaced in surveys and surfaced in past reports, but are they still accurate? Is the task force direction, the task, the direction that the community would like to see these sites go in? And that's particularly, I think, important for the Triangle Neighborhood, because obviously Annie Gates in particular is right at the heart of that neighborhood, and the Rec Center as well is a contributing piece of that neighborhood, as well as part of the San Pablo corridor. So really engaging with the community. So we are going to be holding a community open house on October 19th, and you will hopefully be hearing a whole lot more about it, so please do.
Do you have a time, a time or place?
Yes, 10:00, 10:00 AM to 1, 10:00 AM to noon, at Annie Gates, in the multipurpose room. And that will be in an e-newsletter, and we have flyers that will be distributed, so hopefully you will be getting multiple points of contact with it. And please do, again, get the word out to others, that this is an opportunity to really take a look at what the task force has done to date and to see the preliminary recommendations. And I think it's important to be clear that although we're calling this a master plan for a full-service community, these are recommendations that are going to come first to you, and then they're going to go to the school board and to the city council, because those are the decision-making bodies at the end of the day. So what we're looking for and what the group has been tasked with providing are really their best recommendations based on looking at all the data, looking at what the community has to say about it, and looking at the sites themselves in terms of what they might accommodate. And that can obviously change when it gets to the school board or the council, and that's the prerogative of those bodies to really take action, because those sites obviously are each owned by the two entities, so.
Questions? I have a question. Was Ralph Hollis site originally included in this?
It was not in what we were tasked with doing, because it was already programmed at the time that this process launched in April, I think, and it was already programmed with a prenatal pre-K programming at that point.
I meant a separate process for this site years ago.
I just thought there were three sites for some reason when we started this process. No, it was originally, it was referred to as a six-site master plan initially, but it was always scope to look at those two sites. And we changed the wording to make sure that was clear, that we weren't actually looking at all six.
I have a few comments on the, on the task force. I attended two recent meetings, and I've talked to several members of the task force, and I was a little dismayed to find out from them that they were as confused as I was about the direction of the task force, about the rationale for the task force, and let me expand on this. We went out to this community with this grand vision of the ECCL, as the ECCL would be the center of the community. Now, even before we knocked down the high school, the plans are to go out to the community on October 19th and talk about different areas for different programmatic areas. What are we doing here? The ECCL is a marvelous, marvelous vision, and we have had so far, I would say, the majority support to move forward for this. But now we got a wild card in here, we're all, we're starting to have a discussion about other places that we're going to have services or programs. This doesn't make sense to me. I understand that this was, from my perspective, kind of a knee-jerk reaction to some criticism of the school board, that they had no plans for Annie Gates or Ralph Hollis or something like that.
That's not exactly true.
Well, if I may finish, you can have that, after I'm finished. I could be wrong about that, but I'm concerned that the message that the city school committee is sending out, the council is sending out, and the school board is sending out, that, oh, no, ECCL is not going to be the center of the community, we're going to have sites all over in a one-square-mile town. There's something inconsistent about this message, and I want everybody to think carefully about going out on October 19th with a widely publicized meeting that says, these are other areas, and we have to decide now, or we, we're going to give recommendations now for how they will be used. It doesn't make sense to me, guys, and that's why I asked to have this put on this agenda.
So I'd like to set the context and the impetus, in terms of the impetus for this task force, a little bit differently. When we lost the idea of using the AC Transit Yard, when we lost the idea of using, buying the PG&E site, when we decided to go with land that we didn't have to acquire, we had to work within certain space constraints. Then as the money for that project cut out buildings and stories in, on the campus, we realized we could not house all of the programs that we would like to deliver on the ECCL campus. So when we looked at what the public entities in town had access to, these were the two sites where we could think about housing programs that could not be housed on ECCL campus because of the space and constraints. So in keeping with the ECCL vision, not everything could be, that we would like to offer in this town can be offered on that site, and a lot of compromises and changes had to happen in terms of the, to accommodate what could be built there with the available funding. So that combined with a lot of public attachment, quite frankly, not to the portables on San Pablo that the Rec Center uses, because, you know, you can't get that loyal to portables that are depreciating every day. But, but there was a lot of loyalty to a neighborhood-based Annie Gates, and so the question is, is what, what can we offer the community, particularly on that site, where that could meet unmet community needs? So because the ECCL site can't handle, can't house everything that we want, we can house projects that can be wraparound services elsewhere in the city. So that was the impetus for, for the task force. It wasn't, and, and there was a lot of, you know, there was a lot of concern about what would happen on that site and what, and all the other sites in the city, and it only made sense to think about our one-square-mile holistically, and rather than just trying to, we couldn't put all of our eggs in one basket on the ECCL site, so that, so that was the background for that.
Well, that, you know, that's your perception of it, Ruth. My perception of it is that we went out to this community, and we told this community that this was going to be a center for community life, the programs would be concentrated there, and now we've come to a point in time where we don't have any, any steel in the ground yet, any building in the ground yet, we don't even have the old high school knocked down. We clearly have to go out for another school fund, and it, to me, it is not the time to go out to the community and say, oh, by the way, we sold you a bill of goods on the ECCL, we really can't do what we said we were going to do there. We really can't do what we said we were going to do there. There's something inherently, the timing on this is not good in terms of the school bond if you're coming up. The message it sends is...
The parcel tax, yeah.
A parcel tax, a parcel tax.
We don't need the notice.
No, no, the, the parcel tax. I missed that there.
Well, I, I thought...
But do you see the point I'm trying to make here? This is a, this is a matter of the community, so far, the majority of the people are supporting us on ECL. I think to go out to the community now and say, oh, by the way, it's really not going to work the way we said. We want to spend some more money or do something different here.
I think it may also be helpful...
Well, I, I thought Annie Yates, what we were going to try to do with Annie Yates was bring another education provider into that site and see if there was a need. But that need was, was not a need that was going to be filled by this city per se. It was going, we were going to talk to City College of Berkeley and see if they wanted to have some sort of educational outreach at that site. And that was the only, only thing I remember about that site. And then secondly, going back to the REC Center site on San Pablo, I thought there were some commitments years ago about using that for parking for the senior center. So, and I don't know if that's true, but that's what I've been hearing.
Well, Kurt, wait a minute. The other issue with the REC Center, that was built with housing money, redevelopment housing money, and I don't know where we are in the process here of, of, you know, with the state trying to claw everything back and we have to have a way of getting rid of property. Why this task force is even discussing the, the recreation site, for the life of me, I, I don't...
So, so let's, let's, let's go back to the beginning.
I think we're way off.
Let's go back to how this started, and let's be clear about what we decided as, because this was a decision of all ten of us. So when we brought this to the ten of us originally to authorize the consultant to begin this work, the idea was, we, we don't have enough room. We've cut the, the ECL vision was cut down by one quarter. We also don't intend, it was cut to one-quarter of its original size. We also do not intend to, to sell that site. And there was many rumors that that could possibly happen. Those are malicious and untrue rumors that have no basis in fact. And we've said for years that we intend to bring in, as Kurt said, educational partners and other partners for programs like the Art Center, which I don't know if it has a home now post-redevelopment or not. We've talked about Alameda County having teacher center. We've talked about recreation space. We've talked about many different uses for the community, for that space. We've talked about it as park space. We've talked about it as, you know, space for other community activities. As Member Brinkman has said, we've talked about it not in terms of programs that the city has to pay for, but as we've done with the YMCA here, as we've done with other partners to be able to trade space for programs. We're a very small town. We're a very small town, and we can't afford lots of big programs that other cities have. But what the school district has is some terrific, well-located facilities where we can trade programs for space. So, but building those partnerships, as we found out with the library, we've been talking with the library folks, we have five years of groundwork going in just to get to the point where we can get a good response to an RFP. So the idea was, let's go to the community, let's have a discussion about what are the kinds of uses, and let's give the school board some direction, because it's the school board's property. Let's give the school board some direction as to what types of uses, what types of partnerships we need to be building. And to take the community's direction as what are the services, what are the partnerships to power both student and community recreation success. So when we brought that to the committee, the committee liked that idea. The committee also asked, this committee asked, to include the REC Center. Let's get ideas on the REC Center, too. Quite frankly, I, I agree with you. I like the, I, I'm a big advocate of affordable housing. We could have some family housing there. I'd love to see it, and I don't see it in, in the task force, and I, I'm, you know, I'm a little sad about that. But all of this was to advise us, to advise the school board as to what partnerships we should be building. Because we, we, now's a good time to talk, you know, when we have a building started, when we're setting, setting that up, anything that we can't fit there, we're, we're still doing what we told the community we're doing. We're still building a city-school partnership that links together all the services for our kids.
I think it may also be helpful, Nora, one of the things we asked the task force to do at their very first meeting was to brainstorm some guiding principles, and a couple that stuck out to me that I think address some of your very concerns are, we did hear loud, and we had a lengthy discussion about this, too, whether or not we should duplicate services. And one of the eventual guiding principles was that wherever possible, it should, the new program should not be duplicating what's at the ECL. And there were people on both sides of that who felt that some of the ECL programs, we might want more of them, and we could do some of them at those other sites. But that was one priority. And another are, some of the pieces that are unique about those sites are, for instance, to the extent to which some areas of the Annie Yates site can provide green space for the Triangle Neighborhood. That's not something that physically can be provided at the ECL simply by virtue of location, and so that is a central part of that neighborhood. And so that's another piece. And one of the things that I think found in their analysis is that there are also carrying costs of these properties. So even if all we do is board them up when everything moves over to ECL and leave them there, you're going to be incurring cost to maintain them over that time.
Right.
And so I think the idea was to begin the planning process and begin the thinking process to really figure out where those gaps were, whether or not these properties can even address them, and if so, how. Begin that in such a way and at such a point that they are not necessarily going to sit vacant but accruing costs for some number of years before those programs and any new uses can go into play.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, for me, it's, it's not an either-or. I, I, either we have a center for community life at ECL or we're diffuse and we don't have a center for, I mean, ECL, I think, by virtue, by virtue of the, even the third-party contracts that we talked about tonight, particularly the library, I think, will function as a center and attract people in the fields and the, and the teen center and the health clinic. And it will function as a center. What we're talking about here is what else can we provide for the community? What else can we do?
In partnership.
In partnerships that are non-duplicative services that aren't going to cost us, you know, the job training, the, the community college, the teacher training, what, what can we do? And I think the last thing we wanted, we want to make sure we avoid is having the site vacant and unused. And so to, to, you know, by August 2015, we need to know what we're doing with that site and have it, have the partnerships built and the, and the plans in place.
And the other piece I think to remember is, is that this is part of a comprehensive plan eventually that is going to present the community as a whole. And four of those sites, it's not just the ECL that are the other sites already, it's already the senior center, the two sites that are serving the zero-to-five population. So there are already pieces of that full-service community that are not being served on the ECL site physically, but that are just as instrumental a piece of that comprehensive, the notion of having a wraparound zero-to-beyond community that is really supporting throughout those ages. Those are not all housed on a single site, so.
Well, I, I understand the dilemma that you have with the Annie Yates property. There, there has to be some forward movement on that. But I am concerned about addressing the Recreation Center property. I think we, we should do a research on that to see whether or not we even have the ability to do that under the strictures of the Department of Finance, you know, with our long-term property management. There is some, there is something here that strikes, strikes me that we may be, you know, going down the wrong road. So before we go out to the public and start talking about, the Annie Yates thing is, is one issue.
That's a clear sense of...
But the Recreation Center, I think we, before we move forward to talking to the community about that, we better pull back now.
Get some resolution on commitments.
I may be not remembering clearly, but I thought at one of the meeting, one of your task force meetings that I went to, you had some discussion there about the senior center. Now, that was not part of the original intent, and I don't believe the city had said anything...
Yeah, it was not to make any changes to the senior center. The, the two discussions that I can recall that dealt, that touched on the senior center, one of them was Cindy actually speaking a bit, there were some questions from task force members about how adequately the needs of seniors were being served by the senior center facility and whether there was a need to provide additional services for that population. And that was, I want to say at our second or third meeting, third or fourth meeting maybe, when we were looking at program possibilities. And you provided some, Cindy provided some great insight on what types of uses were adequately accommodated on the site and what uses the site was not able to accommodate for that group. The second piece was one task force member who did raise the issue of parking on that, on the REC Center site in relation to the senior center and whether or not that was an appropriate use of that site. It would be really, I think, helpful to find out if there are any commitments from the legal perspective to that use. The task force was not supportive of, of putting a parking lot on San Pablo, so.
Well, all I'm suggesting is, before you go out to the community with a broad, you know, a broad invitational to people on October nineteenth, that we take a hard look at that REC Center property. We don't make promises. The city doesn't make promises that it can't fulfill.
That's a very good point, and I think it would be great to follow up with some information on any commitments to that property already has.
We want to be careful we don't overpromise what we can do. ECL is, is a big deal. Well, Ruth, you know, you say you're, you say you're not promising anything, but in a sense, when you say to people, do you want to park? Everybody wants to park. Of course you want to park. How you pay for it's a different thing. So can we regroup and take a look at this task force and how and when you go out to the community? And keep in mind the parcel tax.
And if I hear Member Davis right, I think she's talking all about perception. She doesn't want to put a perception out there to the community that may or may not happen. And I can understand that. And the fact that we still, we promised the community something in the ECL through Measure J, and that hasn't started its fruition yet. And I, you know, if I'm hearing her correctly...
Visibly, visibly, right.
That, that's what you hear. That, you got it right on, Miguel.
Right. So, you know, I, you know, and, but on the same, same token, I hear staff saying that, you know, these recommendations from the task force will be compiled together and they will wait until they publicize them to the public based on all these other factors that we're talking about tonight. So, and, and from the school perspective, the school needs to have a master facility plan. We do not have that. We still have some excess bond capabilities that, you know, in the future, we will be able to spend. So from the school board perspective, it is prudent for us to look at all our sites and have a future plan, and I, and I take it that this is what this task force is doing from the district perspective.
Kurt. Can I just add one thing? I've also had people say, why don't you sell the Annie Yates site and start retiring your debt a little bit earlier? So I mean, I know that's probably something that most people here in this room don't want to hear, but that, that is a thought process that people are applying to that site, so.
And, and I have to say, it, it would be counter to every conversation we've had on the school board to even begin to consider...
I know that, Joshua, but I'm, I'm just saying that there's a lot of thoughts out there.
The amount of money we could get from selling the site would be peanuts compared to the community benefit we can get from those sites. So, but I do think the point is well-taken about timing, and I think when we originally set the timeframe for the task force, the idea was that we'd be under construction by now and, and things...
Exactly. Perception, perception.
And things have shifted. However, so I, I would ask if, if, if the city could send out information about whether or not that site is allowed to be used for the uses that we're talking about, or can it, if it's, if it was bought with housing money, maybe it can only be used for housing, and the committee needs to know that.
Exactly.
If, if that's the case, then...
We dropped the ball of that earlier on.
If that's the case, the October nineteenth meeting really should be put off so that the committee can be informed of that change and, and take that into account.
At least put it off till after you knock the damn schools out.
Well, I, I think timing, I think timing a community meeting to the time that we're knocking it down is a good, good idea. But I, I would like to put that in staff's hands to look at how to align all of that, you know, to, to, to make the adjustments since, since the schedule was originally put together.
Yeah, I, I agree. It seems like the, the timing doesn't seem to mesh right now.
And we need, we need the parcel tax. We need it.
Can I just add that? Yeah, I agree with what I've heard here tonight, and I feel that, I, I understand that it takes a long time to set up partnerships, but based on a recommendation and one community group, the school board's not going to be making a decision about what's going to be opening in September of 2015 on that site within the next month or two, I would hope. And so you don't want to be premature and give the perception that this is what's going to be there, and then things, things will change. So I'm, I'm curious if there is a timeline for the school board to follow. I feel like the city isn't necessarily going to be bound to that same timeline, and I want to be clear that we're not necessarily following the same timeline. And that if you, if you need to build a framework for partnerships, it behooves us to explore many different partnerships and not just the one that at this point seems most likely. It sounds like we need, because there is time that goes by and, and to see what needs are not being met. You know, the three that were, that rose to the highest priority was green space, arts, and serving the adult population, eighteen up to seniors. And based on, you know, Ruth's comments earlier saying that ECL just cannot contain all of the programs that were originally intended, I, I see that in some ways. We thought of a bigger site with more green space, you know, a performance space perhaps, if that's what is coming out. But I'm just, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, or I'm not convinced, I guess, that the, the task force has been considering, but since you said on it, maybe you can confirm the same perspective that, as you expressed this evening.
They have all different perspectives on that task force.
Yeah, and so, so I'm, I'm just a little...
They're a bunch of individuals.
Yeah. So it's a recommendation, but obviously, and it carries some weight, but it's not going to be the deciding factor. And, and it's, it's important, I think, again, to manage perception, I think, as Miguel said, because timing is not the deal.
To, to answer your question, I mean, I think we're talking about a matter of, you know, a month or so of timing. I, I'm concerned that from the school standpoint, we have to make it clear that we don't have any unused facilities.
That's right.
No, I understand that.
So I think that is, that is, that is paramount. So I wouldn't want us going, you know, into the first quarter of next year without a facility, you know, we need a facility plan for what we're going to do with our facilities for many, many reasons. Not the least of which is planning, but there's, you know, it's too, too late to get into a long diatribe on what we can do. But, but, but I'm, I'm fine with staff going back and, you know, if we have to shift it a month, that, to, I would love this, this, it would be great if this open house could also be a celebration and, and a description of what are, what are the programs going into ECL and, you know, talking about where we are with the library and where we are with the clinic and where we are with the arts programs.
That would be much better because then you get some balance, and if you have it, if you have a clear site on the high school, the perception is going to be a lot different. And your focus, hopefully, on the task force would now be Annie Yates entirely.
That's right. That's right. No, I, I think that's, that's...
I, I think it makes a cleaner, cleaner way to go.
I very much...
But if we can confirm that.
I very much appreciate you bringing this to the, to the meeting.
Well, it was kind of a shocker to me going to those meetings, I'll tell you.
So does, does staff have enough direction? And I'm looking at both. And I'm looking at both Roy and...
Sounds like we're pushing the meeting, which is good, because we were due to send it out to the newsletters, so we'll make sure it doesn't go out, pushing it. And do you know the date yet for when the demolition of the high school happens?
We'll talk.
Okay, yeah.
And when you say meeting, the meeting...
The community meeting, but it probably will also affect the task force meeting.
We're talking about both meetings.
It does not make sense for the task force to reconvene until the community meeting is happening.
And are we going to have a grand celebration when they implode the school?
We better have one hell of a party.
Yeah, I mean, press release and pictures.
Everybody take a rock?
Yes, yes, yes.
And get a river rock for your garden.
Are we going to do a fundraiser, selling parts, selling rocks? A certified rock?
Okay. Member Brinkman has a serious question.
Betsy Cooley ran out of here to go home, and she gathered the information on Measure A parcel tax, and it runs through July 1st, 2019, and it's 19 right here.
There's some issue around that.
Yeah, we verified that.
We figured out it's 17.
Okay, that's, we need to talk to Betsy.
There's wrong information out there.
Move to adjourn. Yeah, there were, to her point, though, there were two public documents that came out, and the one that is correct has been validated by Lou Edwards, and it is the 17, 2017.
So whatever's on the web needs to be corrected, which is out there.
Okay, we've had a motion to adjourn. Can we have a second?
Motion and second.
And a second, all right. Here are no objections, we're adjourned.